Transmitting. Hi, everybody, and welcome to the planning board meeting of July 24th, 2013. Tonight, we have Bob Watts, Tilly Evangelista, myself, I'm Harry Lockatilia, Rev. Howard Snyder, the town planner, Wendy Beaumont, the administrative assistant. Without any further ado, we're 20 minutes late. Meeting is called to order at 7:20. First, on the agenda of the minutes, if someone would be kind enough to make a motion.
I move that pending discussion, we accept the minutes as written.
You second?
Seconded by Tilly. Those are the minutes of July 10th, 2013.
July 7?
July 10th is what it says.
We have an updated copy of minutes with us. They've been revised since your packet.
I took the changes that you recommended.
You took the changes that I recommended?
Yeah.
Great. And I picked up a couple of typos and stuff like that.
Is it the old packet or this one?
No, I just...
Okay.
In the old packets, it's been revised. We only have one copy. We don't print out minutes every time, so...
Bob, did you have any corrections you wanted to make?
No.
Tilly, did you have any corrections you wanted to make?
No.
And July 10th is the correct date, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 24th, it would've been 14 days prior. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Three to zero unanimously.
Yay!
Hurrah, hurrah, huzzah, huzzah. Done with that. And a couple of legal notices, Howard. Want to apprise the rule, please?
We got a legal notice from Newbury, the zoning board. There's yet another request for somebody to rebuild out on Palm Island. And that's what it's regarding. In Bauxford, the zoning board is entertaining a request for a special permit to construct on an irregular lot. Both these properties are far from any Georgetown interests, so...
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have some vouchers which need to be approved.
Could I see that voucher, please, Howard?
There's two vouchers tonight. One for WB Mason for office supplies, and the other is for the fiscal year 2014 MIMAP licensing and operation fee to be paid to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay them their vouchers.
Pay the vouchers totaling $1,580.93. Was that your motion, Bob?
That's the one.
And Tilly, did you second that?
Seconded that, yeah.
Seconded by Tilly. WB Mason for $80, Merrimack Valley for our MIMAP, $1,500. Any questions on any of those? Anybody want to examine the invoices? All in favor of paying the vouchers in the total of $1,580.93, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Three to zero unanimously.
While you're signing that, I just wanted to bring up...
Good use of the time.
...a brief thought about MIMAP. And just for those that are interested, Municipal Information Mapping Access Program is the acronym of MIMAP. But one thing I'd like the board to consider for this fiscal year is changing that so it could be accessed by Georgetown residents. A lot of times, questions and people come in, residents come into the planning office, can easily be answered by them having access to MIMAP, MIMAP designations and things like that. So there's an additional charge that goes with that on an annual basis, but I'm looking into it and I'll keep the board updated.
Did you talk to Girard about it?
Yeah.
Get some feedback from Girard?
It's preliminary feedback, so...
Great. Oh, sorry. My thing. You get my...
Several municipalities, Newbury Port, I know, is one that allows residents access on...
Do you have a sense of what the additional licensing fee is?
No.
I do think we should look into it.
Won't be more than the $1,500. I think it's just an additional maybe $500 to $1,000. Maybe that's a one-time setup charge, too.
So long as they don't, aren't able to change anything, that's a good thing.
Yeah. No, they wouldn't be able to change anything. We're not able to change anything either.
Nope.
I mean, that's...
Well, we are able to set up...
But we have to go through the process.
We can set up records and communicate with Howard through that. I don't know how that would be...
No, it would maintain itself as just database access only, and the manipulation of the data beyond just turning on and off, overlays.
I think that's actually an excellent idea. I think it's an excellent idea. As of this moment, it's only accessible in the planning office, right?
No, municipal employees only.
And if you send Girard your IP, he'll open the door.
My IP address from...
Yep.
Okay.
That'll work. Yep.
Cool.
Pull your IP, send it to Howard or directly to Girard, and just say who you are, and he'll open the door for you. You'll get to see how you're used to working with it.
I'm sure.
Very, very good. Cool. Look forward to hearing more about that.
All right.
Okay. Licensing and operation, WB Mason. And first up on the agenda tonight is the continuation of the special permit hearing for Lisa Lane, OSRD, and preliminary. Everybody, come on up and say aye. You looked a tad surprised there. Did you think you weren't going to be up so quickly, or...
Oh, no, because you said continuation of the special permit, and I know that we closed it and...
Right.
It's still called that. The OSRD, but we're still calling it the special permit.
Oh, you are?
Because that's how the whole public hearing was opened.
Yeah, just to maintain the...
Even though you're just reviewing preliminary.
Okay, that's why I looked at you like, hmm, that's interesting.
In case anyone's interested.
You want to refile for a preliminary?
Excuse me, I didn't hear you. No, you can call it whatever you like, Mr. Snyder.
Just in case anyone is a little confused by that, this originally came in as an open space residential design submission. As part of that, the applicant naturally has the option of additionally filing a preliminary plan with that, a regular preliminary subdivision plan. They chose to do so. At that point, the hearings bifurcate, they're joined together, and subsequent to that, the applicant expressed to the board that they no longer wish to follow the OSRD process, and they chose the preliminary process to be the preferred option. And so we closed the OSRD portion of the hearing, and at this point right now, we're reopening the continuation of that hearing. And if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself for the record and the tape and all that good stuff, it'd be a wonderful thing. Please.
Good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of the applicant, Artisan Development in connection with a preliminary subdivision plan for property located off of Lisa Lane. Here with me this evening is Rich Williams from Williamson Sparage, the site design engineer. At our last meeting, we did kind of very briefly go over the preliminary plan and discuss some aspects of the development. In addition, we prized you the fact that we were going to be appearing before the Conservation Commission, which in fact did happen, and we did open our hearing for the ANRAD. What we ended up having to do, those, you attend that meeting, and then at that time, the Conservation Commission authorizes the reviewing engineer to go out, visit the site with our wetlands engineer, Mary Rummer, and just confirm all of the lines. We have, that process is actually underway, and Mary is going to be meeting, Lisa, who's... I don't remember who the...
I don't remember.
I don't remember the third party's name. I apologize.
Boston Survey.
Peer review from BSC?
Peer review, exactly. And that should be done by your next meeting. We'll have our ANRAD in hand, I'm sure. So that is what happened there. And then also, under the subdivision rules and regulations, any lot that has more than, I believe, eight lots, pardon me, any subdivision that has more than eight lots is required to have an affordable component. So what we did was we appeared before the Affordable Housing Trust. More than four? Trust. We appeared before the Affordable Housing Trust last week, and just discussed the various options for actually having an affordable unit. If the plan were approved with as many lots as we show, we would be required to provide for two affordables and have to give .6 in value for a fractional. You don't give the third. You give a fractional interest. That's the way the bylaw works.
Anything over five, I believe.
No.
Over five?
If you read, it's any...
It's a whole one. I remember.
There's a component to it. There's a component to it.
You can do a contribution in lieu when you pay.
That's true, but anything over...
That's the way your bylaw reads.
There's a component to it.
So we discussed this with the commission, and they agree.
Check that out.
The affordable housing committee, the trust.
Remember, the Affordable Housing Trust is completely separate from everything.
Oh, no, I realize that. I'm just telling, I'm just trying to explain to you what the process was, and I've read the rules and regulations pretty clear to me, the way they work. So anyhow, but notwithstanding any of that, so we discussed the various options, whether or not you provide onsite, whether you provide offsite, which is going to be the better, whether you do a financial contribution, whether you actually provide for homes, and that's just stuff we had discussed with them. They obviously aren't going to provide you with a recommendation yet because we're not even close to that point, but under your rules, we're supposed to go and have an informal before them, so that's why we did that. Your rules say that you should appear before the trust and begin the process.
The task force or the trust? The trust, the trust, no?
Yeah, and so we did that.
Task force, okay.
The task was there in quorum, too, so...
Excellent. Excellent. Good to know everybody's, you're getting all that good information.
Oh, yeah, no, they were very...
How many were present in the task force?
Pardon you?
How many people were present?
Oh, six? Was it six, Howard, or seven?
There was...
I'm only counting you as the seven. All right? Because I was trying to count people.
There was four from the trust, and there was three from the task force.
There were seven, okay.
But one member of the trust is on the task force, but they all, both met in quorum.
Okay.
Great. That's fantastic.
And we just discussed the various options and whether, you know, whether, how we would actually, what would be best for the town in providing affordable housing, whether, what's the best manner? And, you know, they basically said, we don't know. Sometimes offsite's better, sometimes onsite's better. They prefer not to have a financial contribution because then they have to build it, so they would prefer that the developer actually provide for the unit to the extent possible. So that's just the stuff we had discussed. And we are looking for offsite options, we're looking for onsite options, we're just looking at everything to decide what's going to be best.
It'd be good to have a discussion with them at some point.
Oh...
After we get to definitive.
That's what I mean, after, we have to have more, but we...
Maybe have a joint meeting, discuss it with them, see what they recommend.
Oh, we'd love to have a joint meeting with the planning board, though.
That might be a nice idea.
Yeah, that actually probably would be the most productive way in which to do it because then you can ask questions directly instead of going back and forth outside.
But that's down the line.
Oh, that's not even in this hearing process. This is, that's in definitive.
No, but we figured it's best for us to...
It's good that you have the information you need.
Yeah.
To start making those decisions and...
Absolutely.
Looking at all your options.
And then what we had hoped to have, but did not receive, are any comments from Larry Graham.
Yes.
So I tried, but I...
Too bad we can continue this till the next meeting.
Pardon me?
Too bad this wasn't the next meeting. It would've been available.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean...
I had spoke to the technical review engineer, and there was a miscommunication between the two of us. He understood that the M account was established, but he thought he had gotten a notice to proceed, and I'd called and wondered where the review was at, so it was inadvertent.
Yeah, no, listen, I understand. I just, I did, I guess I do have a couple. Did he actually, when I asked him when, there was no response back to me. So do you know when he's going to start his review or when he anticipates?
I believe he's in the process. He hasn't completed it.
Oh, good.
So let's...
Because, I mean, that would be, it's hard, like, what do you do at this point?
Right. I'm sure you would, I would say over the next week.
Put a left thumb at this point. That's why I wanted this for the next meeting.
Over the next week, we should receive it, and then we'll forward it.
What you do is you get the little hours, so it's cool.
I don't need them. Trust me.
Who's the consultant for the town, for the Concom?
Rumor. Boston Survey consultants.
We just don't know the individual.
BSC. Yeah, so you probably have to wait for that, too. Did they send it to BSC yet?
Oh, yeah. That they had done at that meeting.
So they do it as a...
Yeah, our environmental, yeah, our environmental person's going to go out there.
Yeah.
Yep, oh, absolutely. They scheduled it, too, and now, of course, I can't, do you remember the date that they were going out with?
The 11th. It rings in my head, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure when.
Already happened, then.
You met last Thursday, right?
No, it would be this coming of August, yeah.
Is that open to the board, if the board wanted to go?
Board members, I suppose, could, not to the public. When we start the definitive process, they're more than welcome to attend sightwalks, but not at this stage.
So you believe it's on the 11th?
I don't know for sure.
I can confirm that sightwalk.
Oh, if it's not the 11th, would you let us know?
Yeah.
Just in case, what is that, a Saturday?
It's the 11th at nine.
Okay, good, nine a.m.
Which is a Sunday. If it's the 11th of August.
A Sunday? Really? It's unusual for the Concom.
It's rare.
Yeah, they usually do them Saturday mornings. Well, I guess 10 years ago they did, anyway. The 11th, huh? On a Sunday morning. Oh. Walk on August 11th. Any idea when that, what time did you say, Rich?
Nine o'clock.
Nine a.m.? Why so late?
So did you, I know, I liked them earlier, too. Did Mary...
Well, everyone else getting there at eight, but I'm telling you. No, I don't know why. I was not at the meeting.
So do you think Larry will have something back to us so that we can have...
I've been awake, I would think.
Perfect, okay, I'll keep emailing.
Do we have an issue tonight with respect to contin, what is it? What's that called? Form H?
No, you, what is it? It's, you signed a Form H to the end of September, I believe.
I think, no, end of July, so I have to sign it again.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's July.
I need to sign again.
We like to do the quarters. So much easier on quarters, we never fall behind. Doesn't mean that we're going to extend it out to September, it's just, it's just so much easier when it's quarters. That way we never concern a lot of...
When is your, when is your next meeting? Do you, I don't know, like, in summertime?
Judging from the people that are here, maybe never.
The 14th.
The 14th. The 14th and the 28th are in August, and then the 11th and 25th in September.
Yeah.
Okay, the 14th is not probably a good idea, is it?
I think we should get on, and if we don't have the data from Larry Graham, then...
What do we have that night, Howard, on the 14th?
Uh...
Isn't that 10th Street?
10th Street's going to be the only thing on the agenda. Possibly Park and Rec, depending upon what happens tonight.
And the solar and wind.
And solar and wind.
Right.
Yeah.
Depending upon the outcome of tonight, so...
Start thinking the 28th.
Yeah, I was thinking, okay.
Yeah.
So on wind starts tonight.
Yep. And we'll probably, well, it'd be nice to follow up at our next meeting for that.
Yeah, what I'd like...
As cohesive as possible.
Because what we'll be able to do is if Larry gives us, just to let you know what our plan would be, say Larry gives us the comments, you know, on or around the 2nd of August, we'll be able to actually reply to his comments.
There you go.
And then get a follow-up from him, which actually might be better for you.
Maybe.
Because then you'll have a full component with a revised set of plans.
May work well.
Yeah, that actually may be better.
Any questions from the committee, from the board, Bob?
No.
Tilly, you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
I mean, I asked them. I don't know if you'd like, would you like any information tonight? Do you want to talk about anything?
Without Larry's comments, I'm just feeling...
I know. I just, I figured, you know, tonight, we really wanted to let you know what had been happening because, first of all, you need to know what the...
That's great, that's great to know that you're out there and you're getting that all done because, well...
I forwarded on an electronic copy to the board members for their review, too.
Oh, wonderful, the ANRAD? Okay, good.
Yeah, you forward that stuff to me, and I...
Very curious to see that G-line. Very curious. That's a, that could be a real issue. That G-series.
The what?
We're lining the G-series near the exit, near Punch Out.
Yeah.
Well, you got to vote on that, right?
That could be a real stickler. What is that?
That's extension of time.
I'll accept a motion from one of the board members. To accept the Form H extension to September...
30th.
So moved.
30th.
Yeah.
Bob moves to accept the Form H to September 30th. Seconded by Tilly. All in favor?
Aye.
September 30th, I'm sorry.
Did you say Sept...
September 30th. My, my, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the Form H you said. Just so everybody understands, that is not the continuation of this hearing. This is a Form H, this is a, an extension of time to make a decision. This is just a part of the way this all works so that these folks aren't endlessly in hearing forever, never to get out like some kind of purgatory of hearing. It's a state law. That was September 30th, my fault. I said September 28th, did I? My apologies, September 30th, 2013, to be specific. Seconded by Tilly, still second, still good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Zero. Unanimous. Great. Tilly, Mr. Clark signs that. And Rich, anything? Any revelations or observations?
No.
Comments?
You can do anything.
Lisa? Oh, absolutely. You're just, anything?
Everybody calls me Lisa, Howard.
Why?
It's Jill. He does it all the time, too.
My God.
All the time. He's like, Lisa. I go, Jill, it was Lisa. So when you said Lisa, I thought that was funny.
We'll discuss this later.
I think she's a comedian singer, I'm not sure.
We'll discuss this later.
I think...
My humblest, most serious apologies.
No, it's all right. It's, I just, it's more of a...
It's stuck, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jill.
Thank you.
My apologies.
No, please, it's fine.
I used to have a fiance named Jill, so maybe that's a...
Oh, that's why. You're like, no.
All kidding aside, any comments from the butters? Yes, sir, would you, have you signed in, sir?
I will.
Please do. And please state your name for the record.
Yeah, Gary, September 28th, I'm just wondering if the OSRD is still open?
I can answer that for you, sir. At the last continuance of this hearing, we voted to close that.
Okay, so we're somewhere between that and definitive?
We are in what's called preliminary. There was this, well, I have a unique way of looking at the law, but there is a mode called a preliminary plan application. What it is, is it's a very vague overview of what you're going to do. Usually, it's only used if people have a feeling that the zoning laws might change. It locks down your zoning, and it provides the applicant with, if they get an affirmative decision, it provides the applicant with a zoning lock for seven months, at which time, right before the end of that seven-month period, they have to file a definitive subdivision. These folks will be doing that. Jill, you may or may not agree with that interpretation, but I always saw it, I never really saw a point for the definitive.
For the preliminary.
For the preliminary.
We didn't, I don't either, but because of your OSRD process, that's why.
I understand.
Yeah.
I do.
You do.
Yeah, I know you do.
I'm sure you love it.
We always argue about this.
I'm sure you love it.
No, I just think that it gives an opportunity to have some general input so that you're not worlds apart when you file a definitive. I think that's what the intention is.
Interesting. Never, I, purely philosophical, and probably not for tonight. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, my name is Jack Grossline, 16 Lisa Lane. I'm signed in, but I think on the wrong street.
It's okay.
I just had a question, this is a first time for a lot of us going through this whole process. Would it be possible to just sort of very briefly outline the steps, the boards, how this all goes, how it all goes together?
Sure. We're in preliminary right now. We're in what's called a preliminary approval. If the, when this hearing is closed, this board will render a decision to approve or deny preliminary plan. If this board approves that preliminary plan, as I said before, these folks have seven months to file a definitive plan. Stop me at any point if I make a technical error. They most likely will sometime before the end of that seven months file, it's called definitive plan. The definitive plan will be, it'll look and feel just like this one, and it'll probably be very, very similar to this, probably be very few changes made, and it'll have a review, and it'll have a sightwalk, and we will go through the process, and we'll get much, much more in-depth to the details of it. And at that point, that hearing closes, they get an approval or disapproval, approval with conditions, and it is only really one facet of the diamond, if you will. The stone still needs to be cut on other sides. The Conservation Commission needs to get their approval. The process that they're in right now is called an ANRAD. It's an abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation. It's not an approval of a plan. It basically says that they, they draw all these lines, and they say, here's where all these wetlands are, we think, or they think, the applicant believes that there's where all the wetlands are. And then the Concom takes that, they do sightwalks with their wetland scientists.[1558.87] Their wetland scientist goes out there and sort of says, well, I, I, I think it's actually 20 feet east or 20 feet west, or, oh gee, you missed that, or, oh gee, I couldn't find a wetland at all. And then that plan gets changed. The commission, the Conservation Commission delineates it. They issue what's called an Order of Resource Area Delineation, where for three years, these folks have the benefit of knowing exactly where those wetland lines are. And for those three years, no matter what happens, that's where those wetland lines are. And this gentleman here can plan and build his, plan his subdivision around those wetlands, avoiding them as mu, as best he can. At that point, assuming that the definitive plan has been approved or even during the definitive plan process, these folks probably would want to go to the Conservation Commission and file a notice of intent, which basically shows their, their subdivision plan on top of that overlay of the ordered resource area delineation plan. And the Conservation Commission then would approve or deny or approve with conditions. And at that point, then you have to go to Board of Health, get your Board of Health. I don't think there's any, well, you'll have to go to the ZBA because you'll be building in the floodplain. Your lot incorporates the floodplain, so there'll, there'll be a ZBA hearing.
Where's floodplain?
Your call. See if you get by buildings back. But anyway, um, at any rate, that's how I see it. And then, uh, building permits are issued and the trucks roll in and they start making their subdivision. That's basically it. Did that sort of give you...
Yeah, that was very helpful, thank you.
Nope. I, I can't give you a timeline, I have no idea. Clarify a little?
Yep, that was helpful, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions, folks?
Well, the trucks were all in on Searle Street, there's no trucking route.
Um, that's something that we'd probably look at in the definitive plan, so. We'd get some comments from the, the, um...
Highway Department.
The Highway Department. Find out what the story is with that. Low wires, probably the Electrical Department, et cetera. My understanding was, or, the testimony I heard was it was, I saw a sign, low wires or something, so, but we'd have to look at that. Maybe part of a traffic study or an approach study or, we could, we could condition how the instruction vehicles were to move and the traffic pattern that they'd have to follow. That could be done if necessary. These are all good points you're bringing up and bring them up in the definitive process because in this process, it's, it's a little bit premature. Any more questions, folks? Okay, I'm gonna say that that's a no from the audience. No more questions from the audience and no more questions from the applicant? No more questions from the board? Howard?
No.
Wendy? You have any? All accept a motion to continue the hearing. And that would be eight, 28, 13. Who made that motion? Who made that motion? Bob, did you make that motion?
I, I, that was the plan. That was the...
Oh, okay.
Yes, I move we continue the hearing till it's...
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Tilly, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Right. Thanks.
Aye. Motion carries. That was an honor. Continue.
Thank you very much.
Three to zero. Make a little asterisk there. It says that Chris Rich wasn't here and Tim Howard wasn't.
If this is a point in the minute or the...
For you. Second for you. Just so you know, just so you remember, so we can track and make sure we're getting it on the moment.
Oh, okay.
We'll be calling for some...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jill.
So, I do a person, this is on the...
Okay.
We can talk about it tomorrow.
At this point, we're looking for parking wreck and might need another 10 or 15 minutes. Okay, your call, folks. Do you wanna take a five or 10-minute break? We'll, 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 that effort. I think the same thing you are.
All right.
We'll take care of that effort. Okay, hearing's closed. Hearing's closed.
Okay. I'm just saying, you can skip through the agenda and start the public hearing on your bylaws if you wanna wait for a loop.
Do you wanna take a five-minute break and just wait for a loop? There's, probably should be here at about eight, right? Five minutes?
He's probably down at the meeting table.
That's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking and I'm gonna run down there and...
He likes to talk.
Yeah, well, they probably have them all bottled up down there. That's what I'm thinking.
Let's just...
Okay. Let's go to the bylaw. I like it. We are now opening the public hearing. And how are we entitling this, Howard? Bylaw amendments? And wind energy generation facilities?
Can you folks hear for this?
Really? Thank you. Thank you very much.
This is David Schofield.
Have you signed in? Have you folks signed in?
I signed and I'm not sure if I was supposed to or not.
Oh, that's always good.
Absolutely. Mr. Schofield?
Yes.
Um, I'll...
You want me to read the...
I would love for you to cut, well, let's read this public notice and then, sure, come on up. Come on up because you're a public official, not being, are you a public official?
I live in town, yeah.
You live in, you're, you're a private citizen? Public officials get a priority to speak and you'll certainly have...
Fancy chairs.
Okay.
They get the fancy chair. They get the comfy chair.
In accordance with the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July 24th, 2013, at 7:30 PM in the 3rd Floor Meeting Room, Georgetown Town Hall, 1 Library Street, Georgetown, Mass., to consider the following proposed amendments to Chapter 165 zoning bylaws of the town of Georgetown. Article 17 solar energy facilities, Article 18 wind energy facilities, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by inserting Article 17 solar energy facilities. Purpose of the bylaw article is to provide standards and promote the creation of new large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such installations that address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by inserting Article 18 wind energy facilities, the purpose of this bylaw article is to provide standards for and promote the creation of wind energy conversion facilities by providing the standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of wind energy facilities, not residentially scaled facilities, in appropriate land-based locations that address public safety, minimize any adverse impacts on scenic, environmental, and historic resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such facilities. Full and complete copies of the draft amendments are available at the Office of the Town Clerk in the Planning Office. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed amendments should appear at the time and place designated. Published in the Georgetown Record, July 11th, and the Newburyport Daily News, July 17th.
Thank you very much, Howard. Um, Mr. Schofield?
Schofield, yes.
Schofield. May I call you David?
Absolutely.
Please call me Harry.
Okay.
Bob, this is Tilly Howard.
Hi, Dave.
And I don't think we have to rest on formalities, even though it is a formal hearing. For the record, would you, would you state your, your title and...
My name is David Schofield and I'm the General Manager of the Georgetown Light Department.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Without any further ado, if you had a chance to read our draft?
I did.
What'd you think? Just generally?
I thought it was fine. I didn't see any conflics or anything. We talked a little bit, Howard and I, about just how we view certain things, kinda housekeeping stuff, but I didn't see anything from the light plant's perspective where I would ask you to change.
That's wonderful news. That's really wonderful news. So, I presume that any specifics that you thought needed to be changed, you could hook up with Howard?
Absolutely.
And make those changes directly? Does anyone have an issue with that?
No.
I know I only. And...
No, but I think it's good to have him present.
Oh, absolutely.
You're always better off than...
This would be nuts if we were doing this without you. Let's put it that way. It would be crazy.
Yeah, more, more here as a resource if you had any questions on solar power, how it affects our system and, you know, I'm, I'm, here to field any questions if you have.
I just wanted to, to add to that, that Georgetown is a little bit more unique than other municipalities in Essex County in the way that there's actually a light department. Doesn't, you don't generate your own power, but you are responsible for the purchase and distribution of energy.
That's correct.
Through Georgetown. And so, when you look at how the templates that the state had established for these type of facilities, there wasn't consideration for a municipal-owned light department. So certainly David's expertise is required and is gonna be relied upon and, as well as the commissioners that he reports to and the, the ultimate people and the voters of Georgetown who are purchasing the power, so.
Fantastic.
I attended the meeting as well with, with David and Howard. And I think it would be a good idea, since we are on the cable, that you explain if a resident was interested in, in pursuing this, what they would have to do.
It would, what's covered under these bylaws are more what I refer to as a wholesale power plant. We currently have residential net metering agreements with individual households, which is out of the scope of this, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is more, more, more of a resident or landowner in town that would like to pursue a wholesale power plant, a solar plant in this case. And currently, we have two locations that are interested, but they're in the, we're doing system impact studies. And what I mean that, they, we're facilitating it for them through a contractor. These companies are, are paying for it. And basically, those studies, which I don't have yet, are gonna talk about how the proposed plant in its specific location would affect our system and what, what upgrades would have to be done, what system changes, is it even feasible? Which is a, you know, that's a good question.
Feasible from whose perspective? From the investor's perspective or from power department?
Well, from both because it's gonna be a technical feasibility for us. It's gonna, and depending on how complicated it gets for that investor, it could be, you know, financial feasibility there because we would require that their system being constructed and interconnected with our system, any cost, any upgrades, they would pay for.
borne by the applicant.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And that, you know, they would have to, depending on what those are, and as I said, we don't have the studies back yet, that could be a go or no-go on the project, depending on what kind of numbers they're working with.
And these, these regulations, not just with respect to solar, but also with respect to wind generation?
Right.
They, they, they take that into account where...
Right. I think it gives some latitude, as it should, to the, to the light plant. And if, you know, if, if these projects can even be done, and I forget the exact word and, but I remember we threw in, and, because this is, is a saturation point at which the system can only absorb so much what we call behind the meter generation. And currently, through our two substations, one on Moulton and one on Searle Street, we buy power, we import it into the system, and we have a variety of power contracts. This would generate within the system, behind those revenue meters, just like every resident pays us through a revenue meter. We have four big meters that we pay National Grid and others for the power that comes into our system.
Okay.
So, there's, um, there are certain concerns with putting generation behind the meter. If it's too much and, and it tries to export out of the system, well, we don't have, we don't have the metering for that, we don't have the agreements with National Grid who owns our supply lines. And there's other concerns, coordination, system protection.
Sure.
Power quality is, is quite a few. So, I've had that discussion with my board and I know what they're comfortable with and, to be honest with you, with the, the two that are proposed right now and the sizes that they're looking at, we'd probably only go with one and that would be it, whichever one made it with the system the most favorably, so.
Would, would acceptance of facilities such as this, assuming that the upgrade costs were borne by those applicants that wanted to do that?
Right.
Would that enhance the town's ability to accept other plants?
It's more about how much, it's more about how much they generate in the presence of our minimum load, so.
Go slow, go slow. I'm not that smart. Go slow now.
I'm, I'm gonna bring it to you.
How much they generate in the presence of your minimum?
Of our minimum load on our system. So, on a Sunday afternoon in April, where the conditions are just right, we might only have a load of three megawatts.
Go ahead.
Okay? Recently, we've been pulling a peak load of 12, 13 because of the heat. We can't generate over three megawatts behind the meter because we'd be picking up the entire system and it would be trying to push out of the system into other people's equipment that we don't have agreements with. So, we have to keep that ratio of generation low in, in, in the minimum load condition. So on that Sunday in April that I'm talking about, we, we can't go over three megawatts with, with, we'd have issues. So it's, it's best to stay, and this is, this is, uh, pretty common throughout the industry, understanding of, of this, and, uh, it's best to stay well below a small percentage. Now, the plants that are proposed, the two are 1.5, 1.7 megawatts. So they're okay on their own, but together in, in different parts of the system, that would be quite a bit on a sunny day. So that, that, that's just a quick snapshot. I mean, it's a little more involved than that, but that's, that's, those are our concerns. We also have an aggregate of, of residential solar that's starting to proliferate around the town, so we have to keep an eye on that, too, you know, as the whole picture. So, we, it's not much right now.
Right.
But they're under different agreements and together, someday, they may, you know, represent a large solar presence.
I, I did wanna ask, too, looking forward, um, what, and it's probably outside the scope of this conversation specifically, but has there been analysis of what it would take to be able to basically push back into the system?
We haven't got that by yet.
I mean, I know this is...
Right. No, it's a great question. It, it would be in agreement with National Grid. They would have to be okay with it. Some equipment would have to be changed and there, there could be some problems with the system that would be, that would make it a nonstarter and that, that would take a thorough analysis of the system. The system has, has a sophisticated protective scheme and that's why when there are localized problems around town, you lose local areas and we don't lose massive areas. We have to watch how they interact with each other and pushing power from other geographical areas in the system and not having it all flow in one direction through our substation, it, it, it really has to be looked at. How, how is that gonna affect...
Does it balance out?
And I've gotta say, I think you guys have done a fantastic job.
Well, I'm doing the job, so Wayne Snow's done a fantastic job. I'm trying to keep it going.
Pat, pat him on the back and...
Yeah, I do as much as I can.
Do what he did because really, I think the town has a tremendous, wonderful electric department. But by the same token, I think that this is brand-new stuff.
Sure.
This is just the start.
Do to all of us, absolutely.
Exactly. And as, as time goes on, I, I think that this is gonna become much more ubiquitous and it's not just gonna be Georgetown, it's gonna be Rowley, it's gonna be basically every community around. And there's gonna be the need to, to share in new ways, to share joy.
If I could just interrupt, if I could just interrupt just for the record? Let the record show that Tim Howard arrived at 8:03, please. Did you make note of that?
Do you think this plan to do any amendments at all is premature until you get more settled and...
No, I can understand a need for this document. You know, I, I kinda view this as, from my, my, you know, my, my experience as someone else, not planning so much, but it's kind of oil plate site stuff, which is very responsible. You know, look at Cradle to Grave type stuff and if you come and generate power, you know, when you leave, you know, you're gonna do certain things. And I know that you, you probably require other facilities to do the same thing, be responsible with this land. You know, this could happen. I, I could get those studies back and we could want, the, the next place they're coming would be, you know, down here. These people are very bright, they know the consultants that are involved in this, they know, you know, the process and everything. But, but while you probably haven't heard much from them, Howard and I have spoken quite a bit about this, is because they know that if the system impact studies come back and they're not favorable, you know, why even go any further and why waste any man-hours on it, so.
Can't you ask them to require them supplying an ability to store some access over and above three megawatts if it ever comes to that?
That's a great...
Can't you make that a condition of...
I could if...
Because there's plenty of power storage. Like, I don't, I don't know if it's like made the mass market yet, but there's certainly a lot of research going on in various ways, through flywheels and...
Absolutely.
And also, there's all kinds of ways you can store energy. So why not put the monkey on their back?
Well, it, it, it would kill their project immediately because those things are enormously expensive and like you had mentioned, they're not viable yet. Not, not from any of the research I've done and I haven't seen. When that happens, that's gonna be interesting.
I think, I think that's happening within a year or two.
It, it may be.
I think, I think it's close.
I, I, when, when it is, it's, it's gonna be really interesting because some of the, the points that I brought up to you will go right out the window.
They're not, they're not gonna be able to store like, you know, 3 million kilowatt-hours of, of, of power. They're not gonna be able to store like vast amounts early on, but if you're saying we're using three megawatts at a minimum now?
True.
And 1.5 and 1.7 exceeds that, you're only looking at... And one point five and one point seven exceeds that, you're only looking at point two megawatts, say point, say half a megawatt of storage. And only, and only at noon time, when, because in April, as you mentioned, April, the sun's not out all day yet.
Right.
So, it's a short period of.
There are, there are various methods of storing.
Would you need a building historian, would you need a?
Uh, there, there's numerous ways that are, are being explored, and honestly, I don't know how far along they are. I just, I've been reading about them for ten years, and I'm reading more about it now, but I'm still not reading like this, like a commercially.
It's just so expensive right now when they'd be doing it, because power storage with renewable energy technology is, is, some have said, the holy grail of the industry. It does a lot of things, some of the points you made, but it also does some things that solar can't do on its own right now. Solar is there or it's not, it can never be a primary source of energy, okay? If you could do that, it could be, in theory, you could run your plants all day, you could size them correctly, store enough to get you overnight till the next morning. You could do the same thing with, with, with wind, it's just not there yet, it's not even on the table. It, it would, if I put something like that in a requirement, um, there, they wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, but you could say, I mean, you could say, all right, so the town can, can handle up to three megawatts of solar power. So, if you want one point five and you want one point seven, you ain't getting the one point seven. You can each have, say, one point four, so you still stay comfortably under that three megawatts.
Right, and that's what we'd have to do.
And then they're just going to have to see if it still makes sense to downsize and make the project go. Because you're not, you're not talking a huge downsizing. And then as time marches on, these storage facilities will become mainstream. And then, you know, so the two that are in there, that are, are these people that have applied already?
No, they're, they're in the, it's, it's in the feasibility right now, that's, that's where it is.
So, no one's actually come?
There's no mode for application yet.
No, there's nothing there.
So, those are numbers you just plucked out of the air, one point five and one point?
Oh, no, no, they've spoken to me, but they're in the feasibility with the light plant. Now, if it doesn't work with us, there's no sense in going forward, and they know that. So, it, it would be our decision whether we, we could put this on the system and, you know, as you had mentioned, it's more likely that we would look at the better of the two that are proposed right now. And if that will, that would go on the system, interconnect with the system favorably, then we would go with the one project. But I think both of them would exceed minimum load, and we couldn't do that. So, I couldn't do it even if I wanted to, the board wouldn't do it, so.
So, we actually, there are times in Georgetown where we're only sucking three megawatts of.
Oh, yeah.
And you're saying, you're saying like last week when it was ninety-seven, last Friday, we were only pulling twelve and change.
Twelve and change.
That's not a big delta.
Yeah, well, we have different load characteristics, they're all different. We're more of a, um, a bedroom community, if you will, and we peak later than some other places. We peak later in the afternoons, five or six.
People coming home.
Exactly, right, where other more industrial loads.
They draw during the day.
Yeah, that, you know, noon, that's with the sun and the, and the heat, noon to, to two o'clock, right around there.
How big of a setup would it be for a one point five or the one point eight?
You know, it, and we talked about that before, and I haven't really got a straight answer. I've seen the three megawatt plant in Groveland.
We're talking about wind or solar right now?
We're talking about solar.
Solar.
Is it, right?
Right.
Yeah, uh, the footprint is acres, you know, so it's, it's.
Is there already one in Groveland, or they've already built one?
It's, oh, yeah, it's already up and running.
Really?
Has been, yeah.
And how do they deal with this?
I, you know.
Because they're about the same size as us.
Jumped into the Merrimack River.
Heat the Merrimack River.
Yes, they do, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit different.
Light department, they have a light department too.
Just, they're set up a little bit different than us. It, they have one substation, the way that their substation's configured works with that. And I don't really know the, the contractual specifics of that one, so.
Did you check nearby those at all?
Yeah. In your opinion, Dave, is this a good start? Are we, are we heading in the right direction? We're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, I just don't.
Is there something in here that, that's going to prohibit the light department or make it difficult for the light department?
I don't think it hurts anybody.
Doesn't hurt.
I don't see any of that, uh, but, you know, it, it could be one time, and that's it. You might have a bylaw for one project, and that might be it, that might be all we can do at this time.
Right, but it, that, that one project may come in, and that might give you more time, so the light department can certainly renegotiate with N-Star.
That's how limited it is.
The problem is the, the money you guys have to pay the plant for their solar power isn't like.
That's not really a problem.
But, but you've billed transmission cost and power cost separately.
We pay them, we don't, we, we pay them, and that's part of the rate structure, yes.
Like, when I get my bill, there's a kilowatt hour used cost, and then essentially a transmission cost.
That's right, and there's capacity charges as well, yeah, which are not just transmission, you have capacity, and you have, it, it's all part of the rate structure.
But what you're paying them is, is what you're not buying from National Grid, because the net is whatever the demand is.
Yeah, it, it's, there's some benefits there, having the, uh, some type of renewable, any type of generation behind the meter, if the numbers work. And we don't have a, a power purchase agreement in hand, I don't know if we do go forward with one of these projects, we're going to have to negotiate that, and it's going to have to work.
So, all new business.
Would you pay them less than what you're paying, say, National Grid right now?
I try. I tried to pay them as little as I could.
Because I, I know a lot of, a lot of utility companies don't like the fact that they, let's say you're paying sixteen cents a kilowatt hour, which is about what we're paying here, give or take, between the transmission and the, and the kilowatt hour charge. They, a lot of, some power companies actually have to, like, if your meter's running backwards, essentially, because that's what happens, like, if you had an individual plant at one of your place, then that sixteen cents, you're still transmitting power I'm putting out on your grid, and you're paying me sixteen cents. So, you're, you're transmit, you're transferring that power for nothing. And a lot of utility companies, they're not, you know, power, like, light departments, they don't like that.
They'd be resistant.
There's a cost associated with transmitting, transferring that power.
In our, in our system, we have, I think roughly, four solar residential customers, net metering, if you will, which is outside the scope of this, but we have an interconnect agreement, and we, we put special meters in that track what they're consuming from us, and then what we take from them. They'll pay the rate that everybody else pays, those customers. We, we will pay anything they put back on the grid, the average of what we pay all of our other power providers for that particular month.
Oh, so that's a good deal, then that's a pretty good deal.
If we, if we didn't do that, the other rate payers would actually be subsidized.
Right, because they'd be paying for the transmission.
Right, there's costs there, it's an avoid cost thing. I mean, when we charge a rate, the, obviously, the power cost, all the costs of doing business, maintenance of the, the infrastructure, all of that's in there. But you just to, to give that right back to that solar customer, well, they're not paying for any of those things. So, they don't, and that, that's how we do it here. Uh, there are some that don't do it that way, but really, what you're doing is, you're, you're, it's unfair in my mind, because you're, you're passing those costs on to most of the other rate payers. So, what's fair is, I think, to treat that solar customer, if you will, as they generate power onto our system, treat them exactly the way we treat the rest of our power providers, and that's what we do.
And are the, the applicants, potential applicants, are they on board with that plan?
I can answer that question.
Why is that? What's your name, please?
I'm Andrea De Giovanni, I live on Twenty Seven Pond Street. And I am the number two solar system that, um, that, that we've been talking about. And I'm also responsible for number four, and now number five, which was signed yesterday.
Why don't you come up there?
Thank you.
You get to sit in the chair. I should be.
I work for Revolution, we're out of Burlington, Massachusetts. It's, um, so it's a local, um, Massachusetts business that installs solar panel, panels, and, um, has a great reputation, it's a solid, um, it's a commercial electrical company that's been in Burlington, Massachusetts, um, for the last nineteen years. And so, they're, you know, very familiar with, um, you know, with electricity and the systems. And so, we very carefully, um, choose the best inverters available on the market, and the best, um, panels available on the market, oh, thank you.
Sure, take those home with you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Please.
Because there's an inherent loss of power in a, in an inverter, but it's not a hundred percent efficient.
Some, there is some, you know, as you convert solar power, some power into home power, you use an inverter.
DC to AC, so.
Exactly, so you do lose a little bit.
Lily?
Yeah, you do, and, uh, but it's, um, so I, I can, I can speak from a point of view of a consumer, uh, you know, a small power generator in Georgetown. How does it feel to be paid just, um, wholesale price when I'm charged retail price? I can address that, and I can also address the, the solar developers' point of view, trying to, you know, create more solar projects for Georgetown, for Massachusetts, and trying to convince the customer that it's good enough to just receive a wholesale price when, you know, they're being charged retail. And, and it's a hard sell, because in the rest of Massachusetts, where you either have National Grid or N-Star as a utility provider, you are given a retail credit for your power. It's a true net metering. Net metering, in, by definition, means that your power going out is the same value as your power going in. And at the same time, I absolutely agree that there is, you know, um, that there is, um, you know, the infrastructure costs, and there's a cost of running a business, and that, you know, the solar customer would just be making out really good. So, when I, when I address a Oxford customer that has National Grid, and when I address a customer in, um, in, uh, West Newbury, or Bach, or, or Hayrow, I'm saying to them, boy, do you have a great deal. You have the best deal going, because it's like having a battery, without needing to pay for a battery. You guys.
It's like the meter just runs backwards.
It just runs backwards?
When the power's going the other way.
Yeah, and their credits are actually good for three years.
And utility companies hate that.
Well, yeah, but the, 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 the whole point behind this, this very generous net metering is that, um, Massachusetts as a state has a goal, has a very lofty, very, very wonderful goal to add solar generation, solar power generation, as part of the portfolio, right next to nuclear from Seber, right next to oil, right next to gas, and there is a pollution factor that we are all paying for with our health, with our, you know, with our planet, uh, I mean, basically, our planet suffers. So, here is this, is this wonderful lofty idea that not only the Massachusetts government supports with a fabulous program called the SREC program, that very few people even know about, and I'm very happy to explain it, it's, it's three years old, and it basically pays for about half the system.
What's that called again, I'm sorry?
SREC, it's S R E C, and it stands for Solar Renewable Energy Certificate. This is a wonderful program that any owner, which includes the leasing companies that are trying to get into our town, they're basically going for every one megawatt that the system creates, they're going to get a certificate worth about two hundred and fifty bucks. That's, that's worth more than what we charge our customers, that's more than the retail cost of the electricity, because the retail cost is about a hundred and fifty bucks, but the cost of pollution.
How, how many of these do you have on your home, on your property?
I personally have twenty-two panels.
Twenty-two panels?
Which is a five point eight seven kilowatt system, which over the, over the.
Kilowatt, five point eight seven kilowatt.
Mm-hmm, so over the course of a year.
It's a thousand kilowatts for a megawatt?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so over the course of the year, my little residential system, and it is little, generates seven megawatts of power.
In a year?
In a year. So, you know, it basically serves my needs, my homes, whatever I, whatever I use as a consumer, for my, you know, if you, if you look at it in a, in a covered footprint sense, you know, whatever I use, I also create by, by, by using the solar system.
So, you don't need the town's electricity at all?
Well, I do, because, you see, the whole bit about, um, like, like, I know, I know your first name, Dave, I forget your last.
Schofield.
Schofield, thank you. Mr. Schofield was explaining is that, you know, the whole storage of power is a few years behind, you know, maybe just a two years, maybe it's ten years behind, we don't know. I mean, the Priuses are still fighting to get a decent battery in their cars. So, when will they, you know, when, when will they develop this, this great home battery? It could be ten years, we don't know, but for now, what we have is interconnection. And so, we're very grateful for that, to be able to interconnect, because the thing about the sun, you know, I, I look at my, my year's production, I've, I've been a solar, um, system owner for a year. So, I see June, from June two thousand twelve to June two thousand thirteen, and it's fascinating, because I, I look at July, and in July two thousand twelve, I created a megawatt of power in one month. And then I look at my December, and I created a hundred and sixteen kilowatts, that's like, you know what?
Snow sitting on top of the panels?
It's that, and it's also short hours of sun.
The sun's coming from there, not there. Not directly above, right?
The opportunity to create, to generate power from the sun is shorter, because.
Is it on the ground or around your roof, or?
It's on my, it's on my garage.
On your garage?
Mm-hmm.
Garage roof?
Garage, yes.
You can't have trees too close on the southern face, that's the problem.
Right, you don't want shade.
I got too many trees around my house.
Yeah, I mean.
Otherwise, I'd put them up in a heartbeat.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm ready to talk to any homeowner in Georgetown or outside, anywhere in Massachusetts, because of the SREC opportunity that is now on the books, legislative.
What is that called again?
S R E C, I urge you all to Google the SREC, there is an SREC trade, um, facility set up online. It's an online trading platform for these certificates, that, um, they have a blog, and they'll get you up-to-date pricing of these certificates, like I, I was just saying, two hundred and fifty dollars, it could be two hundred and thirty today, I don't know. But it basically gives you the history of the SREC, how it was created, why, and what's unique about it, that you won't find it in New Hampshire, and you won't find it in Rhode Island, and it's not found in Connecticut, but it's here in Massachusetts, and guess what, this is where Georgetown is, in Massachusetts. So, we have to open the doors to Georgetown customers and, and welcome them.
And, and, what, what did you say your last name was?
De Giovanni.
De Giovanni?
D E G I O V.
Now, did you have to build the, your garage roof to withstand the weight of these, or?
Not, not very much, each panel weighs about forty pounds. And the nice thing about the snow buildup, you know, it actually, the, the snow is going to slide off faster, then it's just slippery and black, and it, you know, it's.
Don't take this the wrong way.
Okay.
I'm fascinated, I want to know more. I, I think everybody here wants to know more, but, um, this sounds very, very much like the individual homeowner would love to get in touch with you.
Sure.
And the, the, um, the regulations, the, excuse me, the bylaw that we're talking about for wind and solar tonight is pretty much the other side, the industrial, the, the generator, the commercial generator. For the most part, I think when we start about the usage, homeowners are going to be able to do these by right.
Right.
They're not going to need a permit.
Right.
Larger industries, larger facilities, generating facilities are going to need a permit, they're going to need this bylaw.
Right, right.
And I don't mean to cut you off.
Right, it's not, but, but I did want to mention just one thing. I do agree that if you have two solar farms presentations, you probably should just look at one, because you don't want to overgenerate, because the sun, the way it works, is that it works, it works crazy. And when it doesn't work, it's pretty much asleep, like during the night, you know, throughout the December months.
I, I did just want to comment that this is, I've been working in the IT industry for thirty years. It's still an infant industry, but it's ancient compared to this technology. How fast this develops, I think, and this is just my guess, is going to be very fast.
I think.
Is that there's going to be a tipping point, and all of a sudden, we're going to be real glad that we have bylaws in place, because your life is going to become living hell, trying to figure out.
But we can only get one.
because your life is gonna become living hell, trying to figure out how to get-
But we can only get one, I mean, I'm-
Well, that's what I'm, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Things would change if the technology changed, they could.
And that's exactly what I'm saying, that-
It, it sounds like we need an upgrade.
We, we will, at some point.
I know, you're, you're walking in and you have a system. Well, we, we, it's about the load, it's not about, it's not about the system. The system's fine, our system's-
It's awesome.
Best systems in the, in the area, I believe.
Oh, absolutely.
But it, it's about the, in the presence of the load, the load is a living, breathing thing, is all of us, and what we do every day. Uh, that's, that's basically, it is what it is, that, that, if we, if our load expands and, and grows, then, you know, we can look at the ratios again, and maybe we can let another plant in. Uh, but that's unlikely to happen, that everybody's going more efficient, and we're actually seeing load creep back, and, and that's-
It, it almost sounds to me, Dave, and may- maybe I, maybe I got this the wrong way, it almost sounds as though we're capped out because we in Georgetown from our light department have the inability to spread any additional generation we make out to the rest of the grid.
To push it back to wins.
We have to push out to the-
Yeah, right now we do, I mean, we don't have the agreements, we don't have the equipment, and we don't even know that we would get them. Because you'd have to, every time you, you go from, from, uh, substation to transmission line, every, everybody's getting paid. There's somebody had mentioned, I think, uh, Mr. Howard did, you're paying transmission costs, uh, capacity, yeah, it's a, it's a living, breathing market, and, um-
Well, how did you communicate, or I'm assuming with her?
We don't normally with the, they, they'll have to, I'm assuming they go to the building department, tell them what, what they're doing, 'cause I don't think they'd wanna put a load on a existing roof without talking to a building inspector. And then, um, we get notified that there's gonna be a net metering situation, and we will either, we'll go up and swat the meter and start collecting data, and, and then we go on. But that'll, that'll be capped too eventually, because it, it, it acts like a, an aggregate power plant. If you add all of those together and there's hundreds of them, then at that, I, I, at some point I have to look at that in the presence of our, our, our regular load.
That's one of the tipping points.
That, right, I mean, a lot of places are doing one, two percent right now of their, of their, uh, customers.
If, if this-
You can always expand it, but-
There's been a lot of talk in, in the last, uh, ten, ten years about, uh, a smart grid. And we're a long way from that, but that's gonna happen at some point. We don't have to be ready for it today, 'cause we don't know what it is, we don't know how it, how-
It's expensive and you have, it's something of this scale, you'd have to ask which, the return you get. Uh, but we may not have a choice in that either, 'cause that, right, you know, but, right, that's all I can say about that.
I mean, sooner or later.
So in other words, it's a possibility that, that you're gonna, say you're gonna select one of these out of the two.
Right.
And it's a possibility they can use up all of the excess.
No, I wouldn't, oh, yes, for, for that, for that group.
And then the residents wouldn't be able to, to do what she's doing.
For that group, but the, in addition, I would probably, uh, take a look at the combined, uh, residential solar. When I say residential, I'm, it's more of a net, net metering solar. Uh, if, if a, a company decided to enter into a net meter agreement, which isn't very accurate as, um-
I'm sorry?
Andrea.
Andrea explained, because it's not true net metering, uh, for lack of a better term, it's more delivered in, in, um, received metering. And, uh, that could take a big bite if a commercial customer entered into an agreement where their sole purpose was to, to service their organic load, but we had to get into a deliberate received situation because sometimes we're gonna be delivering power, and there'll be, sometimes they'll be delivering it to us
sixty-fourty percent.
on a bigger sk- in a bigger scale, yeah, I don't know what exactly the ratio, depends on a lot of different things, but, um-
Sixty-fourty.
So that, that's, um, that, that-
The, the bylaw tries to work to consider that element where it's onsite-
Yep.
Supply, where if it's an industrial complex, they generate their own power and they use their own power. But as, as Dave was saying, on the, on the, on the best days, they might be creating more power than they're a hundred percent using on the site, they gotta be able to push it out somewhere. And, and just, I, I, I found it very important to understand the fact that it's not a simple process of, if there's surplus energy, it goes on the grid and it can just go out and disappear and, and go to all these different places and get sucked up somewhere else. There's all these steps and, and costs and tariffs, as well as just the mechanical logistics of exporting power off the site and out of Georgetown. So it's not a simple, well, if they make something extra, it can be used off somewhere else, if they're, and as you said when we met-
Where, where is somewhere else?
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not like you're pouring electrons into a big bucket.
Yeah, you need a big bucket, you need a big capacitor.
How do you get that?
Yeah, there's, there's protectors.
The electrons have to go somewhere.
Yeah. You know, stop the reverse power, 'cause they don't want that, they, they don't want us generating on, without their knowledge.
Sure.
They, they, you know, it's, it's, it's a very delicate balance, they wanna know what's going on everywhere.
This is like happiest lawyers in the world.
That's why storage is so key, you know, to the, to the growth of solar and, and, uh, wind power. You gotta be able to store that, 'cause you're making it.
The panel efficiency is another real big thing, I mean, if-
Panel efficiency?
They're very low efficient, you know, what hits them and what they convert to electricity.
Probably seventeen percent or something now?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one percent, thank you.
But they used to be three percent, ten years ago, so it's come a long way.
Oh, absolutely. And it seems to get back, it seems like it's getting better every eighteen months, doesn't it?
The efficiency almost doesn't matter, 'cause the sun is all-
Well, it does, it does, when, when your footprint can come down, you can still make a sale.
Oh, right, sure.
'Cause solar spreads out, it's got a big footprint, um, that's huge, the, the, the storage and the efficiency. If we see some type of very speedy growth in either of both of those, the world will change, not just this town, so.
But I think that's very important to also put on our radar screen, what is really, really good for Georgetown? And it's not really the little, you know, tiny systems like mine, and it's not really these big farms, but it's what about putting, uh, solar on the new school that we're about to build?
We are.
Yes, thank you, I'm so happy to hear that, because this is really where solar belongs.
I'll walk against my two percent.
It's coming.
You know, the one thing, the one thing to consider, when you put a solar-
You ever hear to push it out?
Yeah.
On a roof, you also, you also created the perfect shade tree, because a solar system actively is going to create a cooling system for, for a, a roof. Imagine what, what, what savings you could have on your, on your cooling.
I know, I wanted to have it on the high school too, but I don't think we've got the money for that.
And, and you know, I'm, I'm offering my services free of charge to, to be of any kind of a resource, to, to advise on the, um, you know, direction to the sun, the tilt of the roof. I mean, what is really the optimal location for solar panels on these large buildings? I'm, I'm here to, you know-
That's great, I'm glad that you did offer.
I brought my card, if anybody is interested in any kind of, uh, it's-
It's wonderful, you should get involved in.
Yeah.
Could I direct a question to Dave? Um, we, we, we seem to have focused a lot here on, uh, on solar, specifically, and it's almost exclusively solar. It, is it, and I, I read the solar bylaw, uh, the proposed draft solar bylaw, and I read the proposed, uh, wind bylaw. And essentially, they're, they're, they're almost mirrors of one another, they really are, and a lot of the language. Do you see any, anything special, uh, out of the considerations that we are taking in the bylaw for the solar? Is there anything in the wind that you would pull out and say, well, this is totally different, this is a wholly different thing?
Uh, I think, not me, but you will, you'd wanna look at that closely, that wind's a different animal, and they can do, it can, it can really upset a community. Uh, there's certain, certain things that are very obvious, and, and people have complained about, you know-
Sound, flicker.
Flicker, sound, all of those things, I mean, that, they're more of a high profile than, than solar, but, uh, I haven't heard of any, we've never been approached about winds, I've never spent any time on.
You know, and I'm not asking you for that, uh, from, from a, the standpoint of, uh, I have X amount of solar panels, uh, creating ten kilowatts, I have a absolute-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I make no distinction between the two.
Sure vine creating. As far as you're concerned.
I make no distinction.
It's electrons pumping through a wire.
They're, they're both a renewable energy source.
Okay.
Uh, their behavior's a little different, uh, but they, they're, they're a lot alike, where there's sporadic and they're not a, without a storage facility, which isn't here yet, they're not a viable source of reliable energy, they're always used with another source, so.
So the numbers that we do have, like, like on page three, we've got two hundred and fifty kilowatts DC or more. Is that, uh, a fair number?
I think putting a, putting a number, it's more about usage, and since our discussion, I, I talked to, um, the old manager and some other people that are, that are familiar with this, and, uh, it's more about the usage, because you, to put a number on it, the way I look at it right now is we have two type, well, we don't have two types of, of solar customers or relationships, let's say, uh, but we, we, we could, and one is a wholesale, a wholesale producer, whose sole purpose is to come on a piece of property and sell-
Create power for you.
Your light plant, right. They wanna enter into a power purchase agreement with the light plant, and that's what they're trying to do. Everybody else, residential or businesses, should they decide to do it, the school, everybody.
That's why we have different definitions of different names.
No matter what size, but no matter what size, it's all what they're, you know, you could have, uh, a commercial space that, uh, is a two megawatt load, let's say, and they put a one megawatt solar system on their roof, okay? That's a large, that's almost as big as the solar field is proposing, but they're not doing the same thing. It's there to service their own organic load. There will be times that we pay them for electricity, and, uh, there'll be times that they pay us, but they're not the same thing. They won't be covered under, uh, this agreement, they'd be, that, that, just like she had to, we, she, they would go to the building department, say, can I do this, is, can I look, my, my roof stand the weight or whatever I wanna do? And they, they would enter into the same exact agreement that, um, that, uh, this woman has, uh, has entered into with the-
Uh, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but don't we have a specific definition and name for that? What is, what is that?
Our, our bylaws are structured a little bit by the nameplate, uh, the DC generation, uh, by kilowatt structure.
Right, but facilities are, are, are called out.
Very large, large, and, and things like that, onsite and offsite.
Okay.
But what, from our early discussion and what's discussion is gonna continue, as well as the, the public hearing process on this, we're looking to adjust that more to what, uh, Dave is discussing, and that's by, uh, the use, uh, in the, in the load demand. So if it's a commercial use, in- industrial use, with certain criteria for consumption and generation.
Using and selling.
In, in the same way that, in this overly simplified way the bylaws now differentiate between residential, as of right, and everything else, the wholesale, and onsite and offsite demand.
Okay, so we're almost just taking two categories.
That's how I see it right now.
Right, we are gonna simplify it to less to-
It's about use, and how you intend to use it, it's, it's not, um-
So you don't think that it should be three, the residential by right residential? And, um, the, the, the industry that just wants to create electricity for the sake of selling it? And then that dual purpose, uh-
Well, I don't think it's a dual purpose though, I think, I think that the, um-
Maybe I'm using the wrong term.
Space metal building that's trying to put solar on for their, for their own load, and that's, you know, and enters, uh-
Do you see them, that, is that a functionally the equivalent of, of the-
I do, I do, yeah. Of the, the residential system, absolutely.
Of the residential system?
Absolutely, it's the same thing, and we would meter them very similar, uh, they would follow the same rules, we would compensate them exactly the same, but they would pay their own rate. Their, their, their rate would be that of a large commercial or a small commercial. It would be a residential rate, that'd be the only difference, but that occurs now.
Okay, and then the, and then that separation would almost be the, standing outside of that is that wholesale generator, whose only purpose is to create electricity.
They're on the business of selling power.
Right.
And, and an overly simplified-
Are we structured that way right now?
No, we're gonna get to it.
We're gonna get there though, I think.
'Cause that's an outcome of, uh, this discussion, the discussion we have.
Great, great input, thank you.
That simplifies things, I think.
I got another question, like, uh, you know, without looking through all this, um, I was thinking that if somebody wanted to, uh, have a field of solar power, and they put it in the front yard, can we dictate to have it only in the backyard?
Right.
You know, and then I'm thinking, well, what about the poles, you're gonna need to, to offset the extras.
Right, I, I would defer to you about the placement on the property, because they would have to put it where you told them, and then interconnecting would be up to them, they would have to, uh, call an electrician, put the pipe in the ground, build what we call a riser pole, get the conductors up there, and interconnect to us with our cooperation. We wouldn't, we wouldn't reach out to them. If you told them, look, it, it can't be on the front lawn, it's gotta be back there, that's their problem, they need to get it, that's gotta, that, those costs have to be, uh, absorbed by the person with the system, that's my view.
Yeah. I, I can, I can tell you from a solar developer's point of view, what happens in these cases usually what, uh, wherever the customer wants to put their, uh, solar panels, it could be in the front yard, backyard, on the roof, what we do is we, we, uh, wire it to their, um, electric meter, basically, because the whole point of solar is that it services the house first, and it's only the leftovers, like if the house doesn't utilize it all at once, which, you know, in the extreme sun, you, you can't, you can't put enough things on, you'd have to have five air conditioners to- So basically, um, the leftovers go to the grid.
Yeah.
And that, and that's, I think, what, what also makes the, uh, makes the commercial sites so similar to the residential sites, because they are trying to offset at the moment, you know, first of all, the, the solar system i- is serving the, uh, the manufacturing of whatever, whatever machines they have going on at the same time, and then only the leftovers go to the grid, and then they, of course, you know, buy some power too. But the, the point about, you know, where the wiring goes, it, it always connects to the, um, to the electric panel of the home facility, and that is already interconnected with the grid, because that's how they have been receiving their power.
That's a residential, I guess maybe I misunderstood you, if you're gonna do a small commercial and try to sell directly, but that's what would, that's what would happen, yeah.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to think of all of the scenarios, like, like, uh, if a home decided to, uh, do such a thing as a solar.
They do.
Then they wanted to convert to electric heat maybe, and, and is, you know, I'm wondering, is that worthwhile for them to do that?
Well, that's for them to decide.
Yeah, and I'm-
Well, it would be on a, on a case-by-case basis, I would imagine, depending on where you are, how much sun you get, how much area you could cover. I'm sure that's a, that's a question Andrea would look at and run that cost by the-
Absolutely, I, I mean, it's just, because every day, a lot of people use heat pumps, so they actually heat their homes with electricity, which used to be a big no-no for a long time, but now that you're plugging into the sun, it actually becomes the most efficient source of, um, energy, so, yeah.
It's changing, the dynamic is completely changing.
I could see that, we're, you know, happy.
And I, I hope we're on the cutting edge of it, uh, not the cutting edge, but at least not on the, uh, the tailing edge of it.
Not the leading edge.
Not, well, the leading edge, hopefully.
Well, you know, it, what, it seems like the state is, has given us some examples, but they're not really helping the issue of connecting.
I can also address that, that, you know, this is another reason why the commercial sites are so similar to the residential sites, because the states treats them the same way as far as paying them, uh, with the SREC program. Now, this SREC program, a lot of people don't even, it's not on their radar screen, it basically pays the owner, whoever it is, commercial site, a leasing company, a residential person, it pays them back over a ten-year period, roughly half the cost of what they put in into the system, it's a huge amount of money. It's, it's way over, it even, you know, uh, supersedes the thirty percent tax credit that the federal government gives you, that's on top of the federal, so, I mean, the money is on the table for people to take advantage of solar, and it could be the town receiving SREC income, it could be a resident receiving SREC, it could be a company, a manufacturing company in Georgetown receiving SREC income, it's, it's the same for everybody, and that's why I think it's another reason why, why, you know, the commercial sites and the residential sites are, you know, the, one group, and then the, and then the leasing companies that are just trying to create power and sell it.
Excuse me, Andrea, did, did I hear, could, could the town take advantage of, of something like that?
Certainly they could, anybody who owns-
The school?
The school, or maybe even-
Certainly can.
Maybe even the light department, I don't know.
Any owner, any owner, it could be, you know, anybody. Now, with the federal tax credit, that gets sticky, because a municipality is a nonprofit, they don't have a federal tax liability, they can- They don't have a federal tax liability, they can't take care of a thirty percent tax grid, however...
But they get the SREC though.
But the SREC is even greater of an advantage. And so, you know, I, in lieu of, 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 you know, selling out to these leasing companies to put farm, you know, solar farms in our town, I would vote to, you know, to actually have a municipal bond, have the residents be the part owners of a solar farm because the, the return on investment is fabulous.
Yeah.
So the resident would be investing in a, in a very valuable um, you know, bond, if you would.
So we, you're saying that we, we get this straight, that the town can receive this credit, this, this payment, even though they didn't own the solar power?
No, they need to be, we would have to be the owner.
If they were the owner.
If they were the owner.
We're getting so far away from...
She meant leasing, you know, and so...
A little bit off, off, off.
Well, that's the thing, in a leasing situation, the leasing company is the owner of the solar system.
Sure.
Interestingly enough, when that leasing company is the owner, the town would be able to tax the facility. And I would hope...
I'd, I'd talk to the assessor.
We could get a comment from the assessor about that and find out how that would occur. That would be interesting, and it might be, uh, it might be germane to something that we'd want to add in the bylaw. I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's a question that I would hope you could look into for me.
Yeah.
If you would please, Howard.
Yeah.
This has been fascinating, I learned a ton. I learned a ton from both of you.
I got one more request, Dave, I just wanted him to discuss a little bit more um something that we briefly talked about. And it's, it's the, with the idea of the load and accepting a business into town that's a solar farm and things like that. Beyond the, the, the whole effect of how it's a good thing, some of the other constraints you have besides the, the infrastructure system is the fact that you, and you briefly talked about it, is a power purchase agreement.
Right.
You have contracts in place now to purchase power.
Absolutely.
From other places, and so if someone came into town and wanted to sell you something...
Right, it would, it, they, they would have to be addressed. We have long-term contracts, we own, uh, we have what they call life of unit contracts. So we own the output of, let's say, we own a certain percentage of um Seabrook, let's say, and we own it for the life of the unit. So we, we end up with these contracts, and it, they're built, this power contract, it's built like a portfolio, we, we're, we're sitting on some pretty rigid pricing at about eighty-five percent, but we're open to the market at maybe, you know, fifteen percent. So if that's right now, which it is, okay? Uh, when we bring solar on, we bring another behind the meter uh unit and we're receiving power and we enter into a, another agreement.
Agreement with them.
It pushes us right through the fifteen percent, and now we're in a long position, which isn't always good because it forces us to sell some of the power that we're obligated to take.
You're already obligated to take, at a loss to the grid.
To the grid.
Possibly. Probably.
You know, it's not, it's not a good position to be in because of its volatility.
Want to be selling.
Right, I mean, it'd be great if we were getting a megawatt hour, you know, paying fifty and getting sixty for it, but that's not always the case. So these are the concerns, and they, they could get pretty complicated.
How could that be addressed in, in the bylaw? How would that, can you think of anything?
I don't know that, that, that it can or should be.
I, I don't think it can be addressed, but I want, I wanted the...
I don't really think the planning department is a dog in that fight, to be honest with you. We'll deal with it, but it, it, it's, it's um, it's, again, it's important for people to understand if they think we can just throw solar in every open spot, we just can't. There's technical contractual issues, it, it, it's, it, it can be an issue. So, and there's a lot of moving pieces to it.
But it sounds like we're gonna get an education on all of this.
But with both the wind and the solar, not, the, the, the bylaws, like you said, it, it's gonna be um the, the permitting process, it's gonna regulate the siting and everything else. And you said it, every open space isn't just instantly gonna get a solar farm because there's so much that happens after this with the light department.
Absolutely.
So it, it's, it's almost by the nature of how this business is gonna be, from my perspective, is its market demand, its supply and demand, the load demand. We might get one unit to come in, and if the load's not there, there isn't gonna be any attractiveness from any other municipality-oriented uh entity to come in and try to put another one in.
And we can't deny them, so we, our bylaws could be, you know, written so, as we have to, that we can't deny it. So any application that comes in has to me...
You wouldn't have to, because that would be filtered through the light plant. It would stop dead with us.
Right.
And that, and that, it would never make it to you.
And, and that raises the whole specter of what I think the board considered early on of, of establishing these as either as of right, special permit or, or site plan review.
Yeah.
So um it, if...
That's...
Either way, we, any direction we go with that, it's gonna stop over there, so...
Yeah.
As of right doesn't mean they can come in and do it, they could come in and do it, but then not connect anything because they can't.
Or not get paid for it.
Right.
So...
Which might be a big disincentive to them.
Right.
Yeah.
I think tonight we, we have enough input from, from you, David, thank you.
Good one.
To move forward a little bit, and Howard, I think you're gonna be making some changes.
I'm sure I'll be talking to you.
Uh, any, any last minute comments or questions?
Are you going into the wind too, or no?
What, what percent of um the power, the eighty-five percent that we have contractually comes from Seabrook?
Oh geez, we get it from uh, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
I mean, is it like ten percent or like fifty percent or...
It, it's probably in that area, yeah.
I remember when we signed into Seabrook, when it first came online, there was a whole...
Right, Seabrook's almost paid for, and so we're in a nice position there, 'cause uh...
We're getting power cheap?
Yeah, we're gonna, the other thing is, but gas prices are gonna go up, it, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna hurt us here, help us here, so uh, but...
What do we pay Seabrook for there?
Uh, it changes. Like I said, it's, it's a market, we, we own a percentage of the output, but it's, it's a long discussion, I'd be happy to have it with you, but it's all, it's all about location, it's all about demand. I mean, uh, a megawatt hour can be as much as nine hundred dollars, it can be as little as nothing. Or there's even a system in place with the end, that we're, that they're, they're proposing where you could actually get paid to take power, and that's how complicated it gets, and it's...
Sounds like a screwy market.
It's, it's, it's...
Really?
For a new manager.
It's a market.
It's uh, I'm getting all I can handle.
Welcome to the bazaar.
Enron, Enron, Enron.
This, this old lineman is getting a headache, so...
So would you, were you a lineman before?
That's right, yeah, that's where I came.
For Georgetown?
Operations. No, I wasn't, I came from uh other places.
It's gonna work out, we're gonna make it happen.
We're gonna do what's right for the ratepayer.
I know you're not the lineman in Georgetown that got fried because you got both your arms.
That's right, yeah.
Poor bastard.
Get out and pride, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll take a motion to continue this, Howard, when's, when's the best, did we um, I think the next meeting for this, or one more time?
Next meeting, 'cause we're gonna introduce, uh, in the second meeting in August, the medical marijuana, so if uh...
So we want to look at the twenty-eighth of, of...
I think I might have it, somewhere, it looks familiar.
August, right?
Yeah.
No, the twenty-fourth.
Uh, the fourteenth, excuse me.
The, the twelve, uh fourteen.
The fourteen, excuse me. So I'll take a motion to uh continue the hearing.
Yeah.
And we'll recontinue the hearing to uh eight fourteen.
Eight fourteen thirteen.
Good for you.
Motion by Bob to do so, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tilly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Folks, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
See you again, I hope.
Okay, let me know if you need me, Howard, and uh...
Yeah, we'll be talking.
Appreciate it, definitely. Thanks so much, David. Thank you very much, Andrea.
Andrea, do you sign in the seat?
Dave, if I wanted to meet with you, if I wanted to meet with you and walk down the light plant anytime.
You wanna have a five-minute break?
Terrible for the day, are you at the...
I don't know, but yeah, you can catch me down there anytime.
Five-minute break.
Yeah, I'd love to talk to you.
I'd be interested.
I'm a big fan of, of this stuff, I, I, I love it, I just, it's gotta get where it needs to be.
Hi, everybody, and we're back with the planning board meeting of July 24th. Two thousand thirteen. And we're about to open the reopen, excuse me, the continuation of the public hearing for East Main Street recreational facility. And we have the park and rec, and we have their engineer Lou Mamelet from, from the park and rec department. Practical infrastructure, right?
Right.
All right, in your planning packet was enclosed the second review of the plans submitted for the special permit from Larry Graham. And in that letter, and the applicant received a copy of it. The first report is basically added to in terms of bold, and so the responses that were made by Larry in the second review are all the bold comments.
Would you do, just for the record, one inch, do yourself, please?
Jim, I'm into parking, right? I guess now I should start rubbing my eyes to get that glaucoma thing going on for your next meeting, right? So.
What's that?
Your medical marijuana permit, I should start rubbing my eyes for the glaucoma I have.
Oh, that won't be until the end of the month, end of April or August, right?
You can get it on film. I'm only kidding.
It's a pre-existing condition. It's decriminalized anyways.
Okay, hi Lou, how are you?
Good.
Lou, as Howard said, we have the, the comments back from Larry Graham. It looks like out of the forty comments or so that he made in the original, a lot of these are, he's happy with them, he's happy. We can go through them one by one, Chuck Hall, do you want to address it one by one, or how do you want to do this, guys?
Just the ones that he didn't do.
Absolutely, so.
You don't want to go through four?
Yeah, we won't go through all of them.
Ten o'clock, I'm leaving.
I hear you, so we'll blow through one, all sheets assigned, two, plans appropriately revised, plans appropriately revised, number four, CB, number five, explanations accepted, number six, explanation accepted, except eight below, number seven, plan revision acceptable, number eight, Lou, why don't you, are you following with us on these?
Uh, yeah, hold on a second.
Larry seems to be calling out number eight. He says explanation in the practical infrastructure's April eighth, two thousand thirteen letter to the board is accepted, however, if existing conditions that would be provided and to be of value to anyone using the plans, then they should be complete. Evidently, we're missing a building locus. We're missing a building locus on sheet C one, do we have sheet C one?
I'm having a technical issue getting stuff up there, so.
Do we have the April eighth?
Well, maybe we should continue then. Getting late, and we have technical issues.
Do we have that April eighth letter?
Do we have any paper versions?
That they're talking about?
You've received that before.
Do we have any paper versions floating around, or?
In a packet?
What seems to be the problem, should we get the technician out?
Well, I don't have sheet C one two either, so, but I can't show anything up on the screen.
Oh, we don't have those?
You know what, I think I can probably give it to you on the thumb drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do number eight, I think that's a big one.
Oh, you're gonna?
Um, no, we were trying to get it out of Howard's computer.
Why don't you get it out of Howard's, you know?
Just give him a thumb drive.
It wasn't working.
It wasn't working, there was something wrong with it, sorry.
It's my name, his number?
No. I'm gonna get the information from the thumb drive, but if you want to plug it in to see if it's the machine or, or not, but I, it's been flickering on and off for a while, and it's just not finding the source, so I thought the VGA cable had gone bad.
So I gotta go, hold on.
Bob, you didn't pull it out of the wall again, did you?
No.
They taped this down very professionally.
They knew you were gonna be here.
I'm the only one, I'm sure, that ever does.
Still not seeing it, huh? Still not seeing it.
Basically, if I.
Do you have a different VGA cord, you know?
No, I don't have it on the screen.
It's not, it's not even searching for a source.
Yeah, it's not even trying, huh?
Well, keep talking, I'll see if I can.
Can you maybe?
Say a little bit? Yeah, but then the bulb takes a while, right, because it shut down.
It's gonna stay hot.
Power off, press power key again, still not seeing a source.
You need to be told.
Okay, well, Lou, maybe without us actually looking at the plans, you could give us a very, very good verbal description of the plans.
Well, I could accept for right now, you know, my computers, I have no screen because it's looking for the same source, so just give me one second.
Sure.
Do you want to power off, power on? Um, do you want to try the thumb drive or no?
No, just, it's gonna be a verbal communication.
Yeah, it's technical difficulties.
Sorry.
Not your fault.
So let's go back to.
Nobody's fault, equipment malfunction. I guess we better start bringing plans to the meetings again, can't depend on the overhead.
I can hand out a, a set of plans, but there's, I only have one, so.
Okay, well, doesn't really help anybody go on the home front, but essentially, he's, Larry's pointing out that on sheet, sheet C one dot one, seems to be missing buildings on locus and abutting property.
So let me, let me, let me take it from there, I'll give you the explanation here, is basically, we made some revisions to the drawings, the things I think that he's calling out, they may be missing from the drawings, I guess that's a, I guess that's some, you know, one person's opinion or whatever. We started this project with base mapping, or I particularly started the project with base mapping furnished by another consultant that did kind of some survey. Whatever it is they picked up, the only things we added to the drawings were things that are related to the work itself, so if there's anything that's indicated that's being missing, in our opinion, is just, it's not worth the time or the effort or the cost to add to them. The church is shown, the United Foam, um, building is shown, so I'm not entirely sure what, what's missing, maybe the footprint of United Foam.
I think that when I read it, without the plans, just what he wrote, it seems that he wants you to do the storm drain calculations, and that's why you need the buildings, I would think, because that adds to it.
And I took the comment, well, just being a matter of some layer control, because the set that we have, the building and, and the road aren't there, but they are on other sheets.
Are they on other sheets, or is this, this is just the existing conditions plan he's talking about?
It's just the survey, so.
The C line, the, the C series?
Right, so.
But on, that's existing.
Yeah.
Okay, what about proposed?
First you have to do that, as your base.
Okay, so what he's saying is, hold on.
Missing camp improvements?
Okay, so on the base, he's saying the buildings don't show up, because I'm looking at a drawing right now on the base conditions, and the buildings are on it.
What's the drawing number?
C dash one point one.
Right, that's it, the buildings aren't there, the road's not there, so.
What is the date of these drawings?
Revised second May twenty ninth.
Stamped?
Yeah.
I don't have a stamp set with me, but the PDF from which they were printed, which is in front of me.
He's showing it.
Yeah, so I, I don't, maybe, I'm not sure.
Okay, so.
I don't, I don't have an answer.
Okay, so you're showing it, but that is.
Let's put it this way, the information is there, it's just.
So, the plans have been revised evidently, right, the latest revision, you have a record?
There's an overlay that is not.
The, the truth of it is, it's whatever transpired between what I have on my screen, when it went to the printer, somehow didn't show up, now, I don't know.
Look, I mean, it's right there.
I mean, it's, it, it, it's right here, so.
All right, so give that to Larry.
Okay, so, before we go any further in this thing, I think our expectation right now is as, as we go through here, there may be a handful of things left that need to be revised, there's at least one thing on here, on a detail that he pointed out that I know needs to be revised, which will be done. So there is an opportunity to send him one last set of drawings, or to submit one last set of drawings to the board, for you guys to decide whether it's there or not.
What's the reference to missing camp improvements? What camp? What are we talking about here, something that's off the property?
No, there's that camp in the back.
That's out of the church property.
The church property.
Oh, it's on the church property, it's not on the, not on the town, on.
I think that, I think some of the border scouts cut down some trees or took some trees, I'm not sure what.
Why would we need to see that?
I don't know, it's, it's, it's like they lashed them together, it's like, um.
It's, the, the fence is made out of lumber, I mean, made out of limb, there's no permanent structures on that.
Cut down two-inch trees.
I mean, yeah, there's nothing there.
Then you're not showing that, right?
Wasn't on, wasn't on, wasn't on the survey, and it wasn't there when we started this project.
Larry, Larry wants to see that?
It could be knocked over with a good wind, never be there again.
Maybe that's a little.
Maybe he thought that was town property, but it's not.
Well, he's saying camp improvements, such as fencing and structures and other.
But why would we need to see that? It's not on our property, and it's not part of the improvements.
But don't you have to do like two hundred feet beyond your property, don't you have to do something like that?
For wetlands.
I think when the base survey of this thing was done, I mean, I think you're missing the, the extent of what this is, it's, the kids went into the woods, cut down branches that are, I don't know, two inches around, probably in wetlands, so like, maybe that shouldn't be done.
If you put a simple response to that, saying it's, camp improvements were done by the church group and.
On their land.
Off, off the property, off the site, so.
I think, I think what's happened is that was more recent improvement, maybe that was done, and this all started, I don't know how many years ago, right?
Last, last year, in the summer last year by the church.
All the sheets have some contours, buffer zone, and other labeling, upside down, okay, well, I can turn the plans around. Pond edges are not shown, or water elevations, wood road and trails aren't shown, do we really need all that in an, in, in this?
Water elevations you're gonna need.
I mean, the, the elevations of, the elevations for the existing contours that are out there, I shot them myself, and myself, excuse me, when you walk in, you're taking shots at the bottom of the bank.
Right.
Into the water.
Right.
And all the shots that, all the shots that we took around the perimeter were at the edge of the water, that water level changes, so unless you're doing like some water withdrawal study or some.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, I mean, you know, you're trying to figure out how much available storage is, is left in the pond, I mean, it's three feet or something, or four feet, depends on what time of the season.
Here it is, right?
Yeah, so, but the contouring extends in, and, and AutoCAD basically evaluates the contours based upon the shots you give it, so it actually did contouring in, out into the center. How, how accurate the center is is probably, I mean, because you don't have any shots in the end, it's, it's like, you can't, you can't, the, when you get to the edge of the data, it can't evaluate beyond the last shot of the data.
Right.
It's like saying how long something is by only one point.
So, number nine.
Doesn't seem to be information that I think really affects.
Yeah, the, the main thing is the information that's on the proposed plans, at least of my, my opinion anyway. Number nine, some revisions made, designer's choice accepted, uh, number ten, fifty, seventy-five, hundred-foot wetland setback lines should be clearly labeled, um, lines are more clearly labeled, but some of it's upside down.
Yeah, the, the thing I would, would point out to this is contours go in every direction, so at, at some point, the labeling for the contour line, which is actually, I know this isn't a computer class, but the labeling on the contour is actually built into the line. If you see like line segments on a drawing, sometimes they have tick marks, well, the tick marks on these drawings are the actual label, so they rotate along with the line, the line basically has a top and a bottom, and when you shift the line and bend it around, you would have to physically clip the line into little pieces, and then turn and rotate it, it's a incredible amount of work for nothing.
You can turn the plan around, right?
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, well, he says there, sheets four and eight are not necessary, so.
But the same number is on the same contour, you see it here.
Yeah. Number eleven, plan revisions are acceptable, number twelve, some revisions to detail added on sheet L five, the detail is still incomplete, incomplete, and missing walk width curb, expansion and control joints are improperly depicted, well, what's the gig with that?
Yeah, we'll say, um, I went back and looked at the detail, and the detail was drawn using another detail.
Okay, this is sheet L five one, so.
Yes, and the road section that's in there was actually clipped from a detail that shows a curbing section.
So it was a good pickup, you're gonna fix that up?
It was, that's, that's the detail I was referring to before that needs to be changed.
Oh, okay, so you already made that change?
Yes.
Beautiful, uh, number thirteen, details are found on sheet L five four and have been improved upon, detail refers to granite curbing, detail implants call for a tuminous concrete berm, what is the material to fill between the berm and the wall, is the expansion joint needed?
Yes.
This is a detail, right?
Yeah, it's, the, we did make the changes, um, I need to.
This is along the wall as you're driving?
Basically the same comment.
Up the driveway?
Yeah, it's basically the same comment as before, um, we had, we had shown a curb section in front of the wall, basically to act as a bumper, so people coming up the road, you know, it's.
You have a curb in front of the wall?
Yeah, offset by like a foot, it was, it was really more of a, a feature to prevent anybody from dragging and catching their mirror on the side of the retaining wall, as you, as I've said before, the, the road width here is fairly narrow.
It's a driveway.
Um, right, well, yes, but we're trying to, we're trying to allow vehicular movement in two directions at a reduced speed, but still.
So there's a, there's a bumper to keep you from hitting the wall.
Well, that's not gonna be there now, because.
Well, it's a wall, I mean, people don't normally drive into walls, do they?
Some people don't.
It's been done.
I was, I was trying to apply a little common sense, but if it's going to be, it's going to add some cost to the job, so if it's not felt as though that's needed, we can eliminate it, it's not a big deal.
Well, I don't think you need a curb in front of a wall.
I've seen it done many places, and thought it was a good idea.
Oh, I understand, that's a, it's a good logic, but I mean, would you rather trash your mirror or your wheels?
Yeah, the curbing's, you know, I think the curbing was designed not to trash either, because we weren't gonna do granite, we were gonna do something sloped or whatever, but that's fine, it's, it's.
But you're just gonna do away with the curbing?
Yes, yes.
That'll save some money, remember, this is a town project. Uh, stockpile areas.
Just for the record, I will not be reimbursing anybody for ripping mirrors off the side when they're coming up this road.
Not, I don't think too many people are gonna do that anyway. Fourteen, explanation is accepted, fifteen, revisions acceptable, sixteen, provisions acceptable, seventeen, C twelve, we already did it, eighteen, what are the plans to find a limit of the granite curbing between station zero and station five plus eighty-five?
I thought it was drawn on there, but for the record, it's between station zero and five plus eighty-five, as he has asked. There is, I think the comment before that was about monolithic curbing, and there is none, it's granite.
Okay. Lou, you're gonna write up responses to all this, right?
Right.
I actually, I actually have one, I, I have a letter already written, unfortunately, it got generated after your packet, so I figured I would come here, receive these comments, and if anything changed, which I have to make notes on, then I can revise the letter and submit, along with the changes.
So you've got that all handled?
Yeah.
Nineteen, plans acceptable, twenty, plans acceptable, twenty-one, question's still open, uh, proposed underground electric lines, and this is the comment, the original comment, proposed underground electric lines are shown right behind. And this is the comment, the original comment. Proposed underground electric lines are shown right behind the guardrail. As the underground must go in first, it will be in the way of the guardrail post installation. Why not locate the underground electric in the gravel shoulder? Comment?
The guardrail is between the driveway and the shoulder. The conduits will be under the shoulder, set back probably three feet.
So.
They'll be installed before the guardrail.
The guardrail is three feet away from the electrical?
Yes.
And I don't see a problem with that.
I mean, the thing is, is you need to identify the location of the electrical before you put in the guardrail, but given that it's the same contractor, you go handhold to handhold, so you snap a line.
That isn't so much a design issue as it is an installation issue, right? That's quality control when you install.
Yeah, yeah.
We've seen this before with electric lines being placed right under where.
The the trick is not to install new guardrails on a site where you already have electrical, where you don't know.
Where you don't know where the electrical is. Yeah, okay.
That can, well, that would obviously be a bigger issue.
Shouldn't you make a note to Larry that that's not a big deal? Twenty-two, planned revisions acceptable. Twenty-three, comments still open roadway profile plan would be much more useful than six other sheets. Do we need a roadway profile plan? This is not a roadway. This is a driveway. He thinks it would be useful, but.
I mean, what I've given, what I've given here are slopes and proposed grading.
Yeah.
It's more than sufficient to to build this. If this was.
If this was a full-blown subdivision roadway with pavement, curbing, catch basins, yeah, I could see why you'd want that roadway profile.
Yeah, and you cert- and you certainly need those things.
We don't have any drainage structures at all.
If you were, the other thing too is if it was, if it was a road that the town was going to accept, then it, some of those things would be the basis for the acceptance drawings that you would need in the town meeting.
Sure, sure. We're never gonna, this is a driveway. We're not gonna accept any of this driveway.
Well, why would he say it's useful? I mean, I think, I think.
No, no.
I think that's what you have to ask.
How would it help him?
Yeah, I don't see how it would help him.
I would, I would offer this, and I I see this because I've been on sort of on both sides. The folks that are gonna go out and actually build this will look at those cross-sections and see a lot of information on there and want it boiled down, and they will ask to boil it down. What's the slope on the road from here to here, which I've given on the drawings?
You did that in the.
So I think the way it's presented is actually a heck of a lot more user-friendly to construction folks that actually build them.
But these aren't big drawings anyway. These are, these are, uh, these are permitting drawings.
They could be used, they could be used for construction if, once they're released, once the permits are in place. I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a matter of preference. If this was a mass highway job and you were submitting it for, you know, redesigning Route one thirty-three, Mass Highway has standards where they require that.
Sure.
But they also require you to tie it into their baseline stationing. I mean, there's a lot more that's involved.
Yeah.
Again, it's, if somebody says that.
Did you answer his comment before though, Luke?
I'm sorry?
Evidently, this was in the the first comment sheets.
It was.
From Larry.
Yeah, that was the first thing. A roadway profile plan would be helpful.
And explain that to him at the tone, because that's what he's looking for. He's just looking for a comment.
I did. I said slopes and proposed grading are provided. Drawings are more than adequate for their intended purpose. Any additional CAD work having limited relevance is time-consuming and cost-prohibitive. So the PSC's limited budget.
He's already seen that, or are you just sending it to him now?
What he just said is in the letter that's gonna be response to.
But I all, I had, but I had also indicated the same general comment previously. I mean, just so we're, so I I don't wanna miss. I'm not trying to not do these things. I'm trying to not do these things and charge the town for when they're not necessary. They're not needed. They're not needed for the purposes of construction. You could hand anyone who does this type of work, these drawings right now, and they could get started and build this job. It's as simple as that. I I can make whatever changes you want.
But not that there's twenty-seven sheets.
But there's time associated with, and there's cost associated with it, and it's not necessary.
And let's all keep in mind one thing.
It's taken a lot of time just to decide what isn't necessary and what is.
Right, because you don't have regulations. This is not a subdivision roadway. This is a driveway for a park.
I know, but this should have been answered in the first response, is my point, to avoid the time delay.
But Larry seems to think.
He's doing it now.
No, I did it, I did it in the first response. A road profile, it's it's simply another way of showing the information. It's just another way of showing.
You know, when you see the, it's a side shot. It's almost like you can look through the earth. And they really scrunch it all up, and that's really useful.
What he's saying, instead of the six that you did do, the incomplete ones that you did do, he's saying that this one would be much more useful.
To whom?
That's really the question is, he says it would be helpful, but how would it help, help who? Help, help what?
Well, he did six already, so that he didn't have to do, right?
Those didn't take anything more than than bringing in elevations from from data that we shot out in the field. It's not, it wasn't, that was limited effort to get information that you needed to do proposed grading. You can't do proposed if you don't know existing. And the idea that they're incomplete, again, I think is, I I I think it's a matter of of interpretation or preference. I mean, I could get every last.
I think he's saying that because the, some of the lettering is upside down.
I mean, it's.
So he considers them incomplete.
I think there's a lot of contractors out there that could go out with about a twenty-minute discussion and throw the drawings aside and just build it.
Well, I've, we've never had a problem with Larry before, and you're indicating some kind of a problem. He, he's been on the site. He understands you've communicated with him before you did anything as final, let's say. You just did a sketch and you went over there and talked to him. So he, so I kind of lean on the favor of what he's written for myself. He's our consultant. He knows it's just a town project.
If you would like road profile plans and the board wants road profile plans, I will generate them.
Road po- for profile plans, yay, nay?
Nay.
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 Yay.
That answers it. Tell Larry we don't need them, please. I think, we've gotta remember that this is, uh, this is a town project and this is a driveway. He keeps calling it a roadway. This is a driveway. I think he has a dr- a roadway type of mentality when he's looking at this. And if it was truly a roadway that was gonna be a roadway accepted by the town, paved, et cetera, yeah, I can see a lot of this.
I don't think the town could accept it because I don't think it has adequate width.
It's not. You never can.
Maybe you want to talk to Larry then to see what what is going on.
Well, it it sounds like he's looking at it as though it's some kind of roadway.
I would say you needed better communication here.
You could talk to him if you want.
Yeah. If you look at.
You're the one who's bothered by it.
Let's move to twenty-four, twenty-four. Uh, it appears that there will be grading issues behind the walk and onto the Westley Butter for the first hundred and fifty plus minus feet from East Main Street. Beyond that point, and as the road moves away from the abutting property line, grading behind the walk might be contained on site. Has the Westley of Butter expressed any concerns about what appears to be necessary grading onto his property? Luke, you, I know you had extensive conversations with the, of Butter and the Park Corrected too, because they donated land, right?
We, yeah, we've discussed the project with both United Foam and with New Life Church.
He's talking about the Westley of Butter, right?
Yeah, but we might as well talk about the East L B one as well, yeah. I think they both understand the nature of the project. They both understand rating issues associated with it, and we will have in place right-of-entry permits from each of them. So that we can get onto their property in the process of doing the work. It's not.
Sign us.
It's not the same as, say, a temporary construction easement where we actually define the area. We basically, we, and I I didn't say that correctly. If you were to do a sewer line from one street to the next and the permanent easement is on ten feet on either side of the pipe, so that's a twenty-foot permanent easement, you might during the initial construction of that, secure a ten-foot temporary easement on either side of that.
On either side of that.
That's defined. These right-of-entry permits are slightly different than that. It's a little bit more general in nature. But usually that what goes with it is a drawing, a sketch showing the limits of work, so that it's clearly understood where that you need to be on, where you don't. We will give them sets of drawings so they understand the nature of the work and see specifically what we're building. We've discussed that with them in general up until now, and in both cases, it involves no work on United Foam's area permanent. It just involves basically regrading the edge.
It's all temporary disturbance.
Exactly, and it'll be, you know, the grass there will be reseeded. As far as the church goes, there's some paving that has to be regraded there, and they understand that as well.
It's a good comment by Larry. He's just making sure that the Westley of Butters have been notified. And I mean, even though they were notified when the special permit went out, it's good to know that they've been.
There'll be formal notification, so there's no question when that works done.
Well, you're gonna grade on their property, so I would think you would wanna see your plan.
Number twenty-five, plan revisions acceptable. Number twenty-six, see below. Number twenty-seven. Forgive me while I flip. Uh, number twenty-seven, comment remains open. Again, has the abutment of the west expressed concerns about what appears to be grading on his property?
It's the same.
Same answer, right? Twenty-eight, reluctance to add this note as suggested is not understood. And twenty-eight is a transition point from the bituminous to gravel roadway surface should be shown on sheet seventeen.
I just reiterated it. It actually doesn't belong on seventeen. It belongs on sheet twelve where it is already.
Okay. Okay. Okay, it doesn't belong on seventeen.
Again, it may be a difference.
What is seventeen? What is seventeen? What's the label on that?
That's a grading, that's a grading plan.
A grading plan.
Yeah, the limits of the paving are on the materials plan and pavement is material.
I don't think Larry's.
Seventeen is C dash three point two, grading and utilities plan.
Grading and utilities. Okay. Doesn't sound like it's needed there. Uh, comment remained, no, no, okay, number twenty-nine. Okay, station seven plus zero. Uh, five-foot wide riprap slope is called for presumably to act as a level spreader. First of all, does not appear to be located at the low point. Per the proposed grading shown at the low point, approximately six hundred feet of roadway. Four fifty southerly and one fifty northerly drainage is directed easily over riprap, five-foot wide level spreader. Special attention to this area, calc's and proposed BMP is warranted. What's going on with that?
So, we're not expecting a whole lot of runoff associated with this since it's on a pervious gravel road. I think the board has already voted to set aside those areas because it's, because we're not channelizing any of the flow.
Right. You just have sheet flow from from grass.
I would suggest that largely what you're going to have is vertical perking of the, of the, of water infiltrating into the ground. Again, this is underlaid by sand.
Yeah. Well, a long time ago, we said we were only gonna look at the runoff from the.
Skate park.
The skate park, right? That's all. Did that ever get to Larry?
Yeah. The thing here that I indicated here is the feature that's in question will be moved down the driveway to the lowest point adjacent to that wetland area. I mean, when it, when you get out in the field, if the, if where it's drawn on the drawing isn't actually in the lowest point, nobody's going to just suddenly put it there if it's, if it needs to be moved twenty feet the other way. Again, that's a kind of a field correction that that gets made all the time, and it also will have to do with the grading as well because it may be graded such that it doesn't land in that same location. That's something.
It's gonna go in the appropriate area.
Exactly.
Did you have the calculations?
There's nothing to calculate. It's it's really armored, what you're really doing is armoring the slope because you you're passing the road by a pinch point where it's close to the wetland. Most of what this is is armoring the slope. It's not a level spreader.
This isn't a level spreader.
It's gonna act as a level spreader if you get any water coming through there, because the water's going to move in the direction of the low point, in which case the energy in the water is gonna be dissipated by the riprap. It's not a level spreader.
But this is basically armoring for a slope.
Exactly.
It's preventing runoff.
Exactly. And we're not talking about putting it into the wetland. We're talking about putting it between the road and the, whatever the stretch of. I can tell you the distance if you wanna know that, but but basically the, within the buffer zone of the wetland, it's basically intended to act as something to prevent any erosion because it is a low point. Now, we we could get into high banking the outside edge of that, but the idea is we're trying to minimize.
The impact.
Well, we're trying to minimize the travel speed through this area. And so if you, if you start banking and super elevating the outside edge, you're basically building a bigger armoring, and now you're promoting people to go faster because there's, the idea is not to make this thing a freeway. It's to, it's to make it as slow and and mildly passable as possible.
This is a park. People should be going through here pretty much at idle.
Exactly.
Not raceway.
But I still, I'm still.
What's the posted speed again? I'm sorry.
Fifteen miles an hour.
Fifty, I'm sorry, dude, go ahead.
You seem to be reluctant to do calculations at all.
I'm not sure what we're calculating. What are we calculating? How big the the armored area is? I I don't know what we're calculating. There's no, there's no runoff associated with this, and if there is, it's, what it'll say is is that you don't need any armoring because the slope's not great enough, the runoff volume isn't great enough. There's, I I've said this a hundred times, I'll say it a hundred more. The area that this area underlays takes water at, I believe it's two point four inches per hour. The peak intensity of rainfall during a hundred-year storm in the fifteen-minute greatest clip is two point one. Therefore, it can't rain hard enough.
Did you submit that answer? Because it appears to be on the first.
I I did. It's in, it's, it's actually.
You sent that before.
It's, it's in the stormwater report that I put together initially. The one that doesn't have drainage calculations because I've already identified that you don't need any drainage calculations. It's, we're not collecting any water here. We're not impounding any water. No curves.
Does the board agree that I'll call up Larry to see what's going on here with this? Do you mind if I call?
I I think Larry doesn't understand that, you know, we, we're not looking at that stuff because all we're looking at is up at.
To see what the heck is going on with this.
There's, there's two more boards that are gonna ask me these same questions. One from Flood Plane, and one is Concom, which will also get reviewed by DEP. And DEP has already told me that they they look at this area and they're, they're not expecting any drainage calculations because you're not collecting anything. They're interested in the skateboard park.
Did they tell you that in writing?
Um, they told me that in person. I went in and sat down with the reviewer.
Oh, 'cause I I would just transmit it to Larry. Yeah, yeah, I did write.
There's, there's nothing impervious here except the sidewalk, right?
What comes in writing is the review comments that come back from DEP during the notice of intent process through Concom. In other words, because that process exists.
Yeah.
This board doesn't even, this board doesn't even need to concern itself with stormwater runoff because there's another board that's going to pick that up anyways. And and I mean, I'm not being, trying to be disrespectful at all, but there's a, there's a process that you follow through here. I'm the first one to admit that on the special planning permit process, I wasn't familiar enough with it, so I've kind of learned that process. But from this aspect of it is very clear. You've got, you've got two other boards that are gonna ask the same questions. One of which is going to ask and be looking for answers relative to Flood Plane, of which the project isn't in a Flood Plane. The second board is gonna ask for specific calculations associated with that park. Now, I can generate them for this one.
Well, who was gonna do it for the Concom? Well, who was their town, their consultant for this project?
DEP.
DEP reviews their, their stuff.
No, DEP.
Concom is gonna send it.
DEP would probably send it to BSC or something. The same way they did it for the, for the school.
You mean the Concom will send it to the DEP?
Yeah, just the same way they did it for the school. How did they do it for the school? We didn't review it for the school.
BSC did it for the Concom.
Well, there you go.
So is that, have you been to the Concom?
Yes.
And?
They're waiting for this board to finalize their permit so that they can finalize Concom's permit. We started with Concom to make sure that the scope of our work, what we proposed, where we proposed it
Yeah.
was acceptable to them.
Yeah.
And they said that it was.
So you're gonna need the calculate, you're not gonna need any calculations at all, you're telling me, for either board?
DEP already said that you don't?
DEP said you don't need any calculations for any of the areas except for the skateboard park.
Which is the same thing as what we said.
And the skateboard park is surrounded by. And the skateboard park is surrounded by a rain garden that with calculations you'll see is probably three times as big as it needs to be. And the only reason why it's that is if anybody ever decided to pave this road and didn't have the right permits, at least there would be mitigation, uh, uh, some mitigation tools there to help the process. Now, I don't think anybody's gonna pave this because, as I said before, there's barely enough money to build the stuff that's on the drawings now, let alone pave the road. So, that, but again, my job is to see ahead and hopefully try to create something that's usable now and usable later.
Does that answer your question? You, you wanna move on, or are you gonna go with that?
Um, well, I, I'm kind of, that's, that's
I mean, stormwater, stormwater.
It seems weird to me, that's all, it just seems so different.
Well, it's different because
That you're not gonna do any calculations at all.
There's nothing to calculate if you don't have anything to pave.
I understand that, but according to the way, all right, I'll, I'll give Larry a call, it could be that he's talking road, like he's saying.
I think he, I think he's looking at roadway regulations.
And I'll go over with him and say that, you know, this is not gonna be a road, this is a driveway.
There you go.
And we'll see what he says, but throughout this thing, it's a shame.
I think your comment too is very germane about.
To pay all that money when we're talking about a, a driveway.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you guys are paying for this.
About the perpetability though.
No, we're paying for it.
Larry, well.
This is a tech, this is.
Town, the town's paying for this.
I understand that, but it's, it seems wasteful.
Yeah, I know.
Is that point just gonna add time to all of this? Can, can you all vote on that? And does, does Larry, have you even thought about that, or can there be a vote on that issue? Cause it's not all members.
No, Larry has to. I'm gonna call Larry, I, I just, um.
We'll touch base with him.
Yeah, to, yeah, to get this cleared up before a vote goes, takes place.
We'll, we'll touch base. Uh, thirty, thirty, uh, plans acceptable, thirty-one. Letter to planning board suggests no snow plowing issues and a shutdown of facilities during the winter. Does the planning board agree? Well, this is a, what's he saying?
American Legion, they, they.
Oh, he's talking about snow storage.
Yeah.
The park will be closed during the winter, is that can be in the approval? The operation timeline of.
How are you gonna run in the winter?
American Legion beach, they make one pass through, so emergency vehicles can get there, and they don't make a parking area.
But that's because people live there.
Right, right, they make that one pass just so
It's straight, it's least straight.
People wanna cross-country ski or something, but it's just one pass, there's no snow piling because it's basically one pass. You get snow on the left of the plow, you get snow on the right. So, there is no snow piling because.
Planning on using this facility in the winter?
No, but Peter's gonna go up the top of the hill, and he may, he may decide with the snow plow to go down the hill and around and come back. I'm not saying he won't, I'm just saying he, he, but it's not gonna be like, he's gonna say, oh, I got all this time on my hands, why don't I go plow this driveway? That's not gonna be the intent, it's a summer.
I don't see it happening.
You know, I mean, he may say, let me go through because I may, people may wanna go ice skating or something, I don't know.
Is there, if there's a shutdown of the facility, I would think the planning board would want there to be a lock gate. So, people couldn't get down there.
But why wouldn't you want people to be able to get in there?
I would prefer not to limit the use of.
Yeah, why wouldn't you?
Well, how about this?
I mean, what I. The statement is, the letter to planning board suggests no snow plowing issues in a shutdown of the facilities during the winter.
Well, because the whole thing starts with snow storage. He's looking for snow storage facility. He's saying, he, he's pointing out what he receives as a, as a deficit in the plan because there's no area to, to store the snow.
But here's what, here's what I said before, so maybe I should read this in case.
Yeah, because we don't see your responses here.
That's what I was.
What I had indicated, what I indicated before was that snow plowing is not anticipated since there are no winter activities proposed. Now, at the time, that's what I felt.
Hmm.
If they wanna promote some activities associated with ice skating down there, that, I, I'm, I made that statement. So, maybe I've misled Larry in the, in that comment.
Well, what does your board have to say?
Yeah, would the, would the parking rec be actively doing this, or is this just something?
Did you discuss it with the pla, with the parking rec?
It's this way, there's plenty of places, if you wanna make a small area as big as this room here, so three cars can go down there. That's not a snow plow removal issue. It used to pile truckloads of snow down the American Legion, if I remember, and it was never an issue. I mean, it's not, the parking lot is so big, if we make a pass and make a place for two cars, I mean, I don't see twenty cars going down there, but.
There's plenty of.
It's an issue because you had to, we had to redo drainage down there because they used to dump it right by facing the pond. That's, don't, yeah, that was part of the drainage, that's where they used to dump it.
What, snow?
The snow, yeah.
They dumped the snow into the pond?
As close to the pond where, where they could, where they now today, we have a, uh, more sophisticated drainage.
Most people who are skating are gonna go off of Pillsbury Lane, but theoretically, if, if the place, if Peter made a pass through, if we, if we wanna require Peter doesn't make a pass through in the winter.
You guys are gonna have to take care of it, why would Peter?
Ask him to make a pass through because this isn't a paved surface.
Because part of the condition is Peter's gonna, the road's gonna have, the driveway's gonna have to be plowed up to the church. That's a condition of the church.
Yeah, that was always the way it was.
So, it's required by the town, pave the grass. It's required that the town plow the driveway up to the church entrance. If Peter's gonna do that, he, he gets to stop and turn around if he wants to, I'm just saying, and he probably will.
I don't think anybody wanted to use it, would probably do, uh, uh, snow shoeing, snow shoeing and.
They can park at the church and walk in.
Yeah, I mean.
Some cross-country skiing.
I mean, the thing is, is the idea of this is, once this is built, we're not looking to promote people parking at the church. Per se, I'm not saying that it's not going to happen, but I think the church, we, we're, we're creating parking now. The church, I think, is still gonna allow the U eight kids to play soccer on land that they own. So, I think as long as that happens, I think the perception will be that you park there.
Right.
But I think we should probably try to make some provisions with JAA or whatever to, to publicize the idea that there's, there's a parking facility here on town land, so you don't necessarily need to be clogging up the church's land, I think they've been pretty gracious about it up to now.
Well, my, my only concern at this point is, uh, uh, obligating Peter of the highway department, I should say, to plow what is a gravel road down to the skate park, I mean, are you gonna clear the skate park off so people can use the skate park?
Again, that's why I said we weren't anticipating.
Yeah, it doesn't really sound like it's gonna be a winter-based. Um, do you have any?
No, I have no plans.
Formal plans?
No.
From the parking rec?
No.
Okay, so, the response back should be, should it be?
I, I don't have any snow plowing issues, no storage issues.
Okay, so is the
I don't.
Is the
Any snow.
Is the issue resolved, or, or do I need to actually make some particular statement here?
Uh, I think it, the way to resolve this is just the, the question, does the planning board agree that the facility will be shut down during the winter? And if the planning board believes it's gonna be shut down in the winter, then there's no storage.
I agree, it won't be, it won't be plowed, yeah.
Right.
So, are you good with that?
Right, but I wouldn't go so far as to say we wanna gate it, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not saying it down.
I'm not saying anything about gating, I'm just saying if you answer the question, does the planning board agree that the facility will be shut down, yes?
Planning board agrees.
Then, then there's no requirement for snow storage.
But does there, but does that, but does that preclude people who want to trek their way in there to go skating?
Or to go, or to go, um, um, snow shoeing?
Yeah. It does, if it closes down, you can't go there.
Right.
And I don't think that was our intent.
Well, then, then I think maybe the better way to word this thing is, is that, that by your special permit, one of your conditions is, is the area shall not be plowed, done.
Yeah, okay, I like that.
This is not a special permit. It's a site approval.
What we're doing right now?
Right.
Um. This is.
But we could even make it more ambiguous and just say that there's no requirement for there to be, the planning board doesn't require.
We follow the guideline of the site.
Yeah, I mean, said, who knows?
If Peter wants to plow.
Tell me where in the bylaw, that's a special permit.
Tilly, you're leaving in two minutes.
Oh, well, yeah.
Time to work.
Is the snow machine just that there's nowhere to put the snow, but you need drainage calculations for the snow runoff? Because the parking lot is massive, we can put the snow on one end of the parking lot and have people go in and skate and use the dog park and use the trails across.
I think the idea is they don't want it in the buffer zone.
Do they just wanna know where to put it?
Yeah, they don't want it in the buffer zone.
Put it in half of the parking lot.
And again, I think Concom doesn't want it in the buffer zone.
Is, is the park.
And there's areas in here that, there's areas within the parking area that are not in the buffer zone. However, there are areas on the road lea, of the driveway leading into the parking area that are in the buffer zone. I think what you should say is that there shall be no snow plowing in this area.
No snow plowing, I like that. I like that idea.
That doesn't preclude people from using the area.
Right.
But it does, and it doesn't obligate Peter.
Right.
Or the highway department to have no snow piling in the buffer zone.
I think that's a great solution.
It's, it's not.
You like that?
No, no piling in the buffer.
It's the pilot, it's not the plowing then.
No snow plowing, period.
Don't think you can plow without piling.
Yeah, somehow you, you have windrow on either side.
Even the little.
Good with that, Tim?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. I'm good with that, Tilly, you good with that? No snow plowing, right? That, doesn't that make sense?
Yeah, but, yeah, as long as they're not.
That'll be a special condition, no snow plowing. You can let Larry know that.
It's not gonna be closed that way.
Good. Don't wanna preclude people from, well, I, I don't think you can preclude people
Yeah.
from a public area
Right.
like that, anyway. Um, if they wanna go snow shoeing or cross-country skiing. Um, gate locations for the dog park, plans are acceptable, see other comments, number thirty-sevens intentionally omitted. What, what's with thirty-four through thirty-seven? What's up with that? Why, why, why aren't we seeing thirty-four through thirty-seven?
Original comments went thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-eight. And I just, it, it wasn't, I might have just been a typo, but then their comment was they were intentionally omitted, so my guess is, is they may have had comments associated with that and decided to delete them. But if they weren't like auto numbering in Microsoft Word, then it may have just
Yeah, it was not renumbered.
It, it may not have renumbered itself or whatever, I just, um.
Okay, that was in the original.
Followed on numerically, so.
Number thirty-eight, designer's choice acceptable, number thirty-nine, no comments necessary. Number forty, the PI letter to the planning board had some responses to each of the four bulleted items under this heading. We did not receive any revised documents, only plan CB to follow. And he goes A, B, and C, A. A, okay. Got a whole page here. Okay.
The comment that I made, well, the first comment is, is being stamped, which I stamped the drawings. The comment four that I made above is, is basically what I had just got through saying is that the calculator, any, any, any interest in stormwater management on the part of DEP and Concom is associated with just the skateboard park surface.
Okay. That's what we were looking for, that's all we were looking for, right?
Correct, and that's what, I think that's what the planning board.
That's what the board agreed to. I don't know if Larry got that or not, but.
He, he did, and I'll point it out to him again.
Okay, maybe he needs to be reminded of it. Um, under A, it's Larry has some comments, he says he walked the site on July ninth. He was struck by the pristine character of the land, number of trees that would need to be removed, changes in grade, the character of the area, ecosystems, not only in the immediate area, the improvements, but also with a significant buffer.
Will drastically change the current ecosystems.
Yeah, the, the plans didn't show the water features, go ahead, Tilly, go ahead, you read it.
Not only in the immediate area of the improvements, but also within a significant buffer to it. The plans did not show the water features, and he's got preferences ponds on the site. And I was also struck by their size and environmental significance. So, the question in my planning mind, which is quoted, is whether or not so much clearing, grading, road and parking construction is worth it for one playing field, a skate park, and a dog park.
That is the most philosophical I have ever heard Larry Graham wax.
I know.
What is going on with him? Did he get a script? Um, no, um, he.
It's darker nature, and the blueberries came out.
That's the guy, I mean, he's had an epiphany here from.
Landed on his shoulder and the bunnies hopped up on him.
After all these years of armoring, armoring slopes with floorage riprap, he's, he's done the green on us.
I think he was truly impressed with the property, that's what I would say.
Yeah, well.
Towns people back there, it's beautiful, we want people to go back there, that's so gorgeous, it's gorgeous.
It is beautiful. And one of the, one of the things Larry doesn't understand was that, you know, this, this is all probably a, a, a two or three acre impact. And the original, Larry would have no way of knowing this, it comes from his wish. This original swath of land was a thirty-seven acre donation, uh, to the town, uh, and, uh,
Conservation got a lot with the condition that we would be able to use this portion to bring, I've been out there, but, you know, kid, people from town been out there, we know it's there, but most people don't have access to it, so they don't go out there.
And we'd need a playing field, a skate park, and a dog park for a long time in this town.
And, you know, this is a, like I said, this is a, a, what's the word, a negotiation between conservation realizes that this will also bring people out, because we use the conservation portions of it. So, yeah.
It's the beginning of the, the greenway.
And what's, you know, like I said, find me enough, find me, uh, find me land. You know, I mean, everybody's got, everybody thinks that we're, we're sure, this is the first park we've ever built because we're running out, we're running out of potential places.
But then you paid, we paid for this at CPC, what do you think?
We paid for this at CPC.
Yeah, and we're allowed.
No, a lot of it, a lot of the, the, the area there behind it.
I mean, it's more specific for building a nuclear power plant out there. Right. It's gonna be all naturalized and it's access to more, um, parkland and.
And it's the extent pretty much right now, what we can do, we're basically maxed out for the potential of what we can do.
And Larry's remark about the trees and the slopes and that kinda stuff, in perspective, it's a relatively small footprint of, of that area.
Yeah.
And it's the only way to, how else are you gonna get out there?
I, I know, I mean, it is a beauty, it is a pretty spot, it'll be a pretty spot when it's done too.
Yeah.
And, and B, it seems like he's concerned about the gravel roadway.
Again, he's, he's, he's looking at it as though the
Yeah.
pervious surface is impervious and looking for drainage calculations, which, whatever.
The weight of the vehicles he brings out and weather conditions.
Yeah, proposed conditions, we'll say flows, applicants should look at possible ways to mitigate stormwater flow.
What plans do you have in the parking rec to keep it smooth and, and, um, passable, like he's stating here? How are you gonna maintain this driveway?
Well, we'll grade it as, as necessary, if it needs to be graded, um, we'll, we'll end up calling Peter up and ask him to grade it. I mean, that's, unless you have other, unless you have other suggestions.
Well, we'd have to put it on a condition, I would think, somebody's gotta get in charge of it.
Yeah, general maintenance and, you know, like to get some idea of what maintenance would be required if you need to, twice a year. If you don't grade it, people won't speed down the road.
What, what do folks do, what happens at?
American Legion Park.
Just what have, like, we have other gravel roads in town, what happens at the soccer fields at West Street? If there's ruts that are created there, what, I mean.
Peter takes care of it, people complain and, and on the, not, Peter does both American Legion. It gets done when people start complaining to the point that it gets done.
And remember, this, this is not a highway, this is not, this is, this is a driveway.
Peter grades those, uh, gravel roads out by Rock Pond there.
Yeah.
Behind the light.
I mean, we're gonna basically go point that.
Well, other roads got cinders and other binders to it, this is just straight gravel.
He, he's saying that this course of material is not pervious either.
Which he, that is in direct disagreement with DEP. DEP sees that as pervious, so, um, I don't know, I don't know what to say.
Well, he's saying that what's not pervious is that down
Twelve.
the twelve inches have compacted.
Right, the three inches of crushed stone on top is, is pervious. I mean, I, I.
I think what he's saying is, yeah, it'll go through that and then hit impervious, I think that's what he's saying.
And then it goes back to the calculations.
And, and then on, on, on basically a flat piece of land, it's going to turn into a tidal wave on the way to the pond. I mean, it's just, I, I, I don't know what the answer is, I mean, I know what the answer is, I need two million dollars more to make this a road. To, to put curbs, sidewalk, drainage, catch basins, stormwater outfalls, you know, to do it right.
To make it a highway.
To make, to.
To make it a roadway.
Right, then it'll be twenty-five miles an hour, be striped, there'll be a, probably be a, you know.
Put a light there. Put a light there, and signal.
Lights or whatever, I'm, I'm just saying is, and, and it, it won't feel like the entrance to a greenway.
Right.
So I guess the question is, is what, what are you trying to create? A- and by the way, parking rec is still looking for another three hundred thousand dollars to, to build the, to have the funds to build the baseball park portion of this, despite the fact that we're permitting it right now. So, i- if there's additional monies that you wanna spend, you know, we can make it top shelf to about the, uh, to the entrance to, to where the parking lot is, and then just stop.
But we don't want it to be not safe, that's number one. And according to the second paragraph, on July first, I was at the site during one of the numerous heavy rain events of the week. During that event, I observed heavy surface flows of water coming out of the site, flowing westernly along East Main Street, and flowing northwesternly across the parking area of the butter in the west.
That's the paved driveway at the front of the parking lot, at the front of the project.
I would estimate that under current conditions, ninety percent of the subject site's stormwater flowage coming down the existing driveway flows westernly along East Main Street for a short distance, and then across the butter's parking lot.
But that's not gonna change till it's, it'll be big.
Yeah, I, I, the, if I'm not mistaken, there's, um, there's a rise and then it goes down as you go back into the parking.
He's referring to the top of, he's referring to the top of the parking lot down to East Main Street, which is-
As it is right now.
To the top of which parking lot?
To the top of the church's parking lot, which is already paved.
Yeah.
Exac- exactly.
It's an existing, it's an existing condition now.
Right, this project is not gonna have any impact on it.
Well, no, I, no, that, that's not exactly true. Because part of the grading to soften the slope coming over the hill is actually gonna promote some of the runoff that comes from the upper church parking lot to go to the backside.
And that's what he says in the next paragraph.
No, you're saying that's-
So it's not like it's a special-
Larry's saying the opposite.
It'll, it'll relieve some-
What's flowing down now, it's not gonna be as much flowing down now.
I can't say with absolute certainty what percentage won't be. I mean, I could calculate it if you want to.
But if you have X now-
But it's not gonna change because, because it's, it's basically just gonna be a break. It's, there's X now, right now, X comes down and zero X goes the other way, it might be seventy, thirty, eighty, twenty.
So it's gonna be actually less-
The total isn't gonna change.
It's gonna be that for East Main Street.
No, and he's saying it's not-
Larry's saying the opposite.
Yeah, that's weird.
The high point therefore-
I mean, the gr- the proposed grading shows that the grading, the direct, the direction of the grades changes in the proposed from the upper portion of that parking lot towards the back where the U eight soccer field's at.
And Larry's looking for pre and post drainage calculations for the area for what flows out onto East Main Street.
For property that's not ours.
Yeah, I know.
I think, it's not a, it's not a problem now, no one's complaining now about this.
I think Larry's looking at this as, as though it's a little bit more, and he completely disagrees that, uh-
Well, it's a risk that you're gonna be responsible for.
We're already, the town's already responsible for, when it rained the other day,
Yeah.
the same conditions that exist now will exist after this project is done.
Um, can I just point out, however, as suggested above, I believe the planning board can use its discretion to require stormwater review and mitigation where it is needed, and delete the same where calculations make no difference. As long as the proposed soil erosion and sediment control provisions and proposed improvements are implemented. So basically, he's saying, it's our discretion. He's pointing it out that, you know, it might be something we wanna look at, um-
As long as the proposed improvements to rain garden, et cetera, is done.
As long as there's no difference, he says.
So basically, he's being, Larry, he's being very conservative, he's saying-
Protecting himself.
He's protecting, he's, he's pointing out all the things that he always points out. Be aware, this, 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 and this, and make your choices, figure out what you like.
But he was a little more poetic, perhaps, in this.
But, yes, he was, he was positively Walden-esque.
You're not gonna put crushed stone shoulder. That's how he's, he's ending it.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Crushed stone shoulder, crushed stone apron.
Yeah. Grass, shoulder, and rain garden.
Which are the proposed improvements.
And rain gardens are implemented.
Saying that those are the-
That's on the plan.
Those are the ones on the plan, yeah. Wh- which paragraph are you reading from, I'm sorry? The very end, the, the last page, right, um, I see it, I see it.
And then he goes on to say, "From a planning perspective, I'm questioning the need for a proposed sidewalk running full length to the site. Does the town see sidewalk connected to the site to Pillsbury or other place? Uh, also, the low volume, few pedestrians, eliminating the sidewalk could save a lot of money and soften the grading issues."
I think we've discussed that already for safety, yeah.
I don't agree with that, this is an H P and a safety issue.
I think we wanted the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think I agree with Larry on that one.
We have no, we have no potential access right now from Pillsbury, so-
Yeah.
And even then, with that, that would just help mitigate people coming from the high school, that, but right now, we have, you said it's handicapped, people can use the sidewalk.
Um, I think we're pretty good on the fact that we want a sidewalk all the way for H P accessibility and for safety, right? This is, this is, yeah.
That was one of our conditions.
So, and again, I think Larry's just pointing out you could save money by omitting it, but- Uh, D, question, the choice of a timber guardrail in the parking area. I thought we eliminated that, didn't we eliminate that? Am I missing something here? I thought we were going with just the wheel stops or something.
No.
No?
Honestly, I think at the, at the outset of this process, we were thinking about wheel stops. The problem, the problem that you have here is that because it's not a paved surface, you've got nothing to paint.
Right.
Direction arrows in right now.
Right, you never had the pocket.
So you need something for which you can either mount some small signs, something to give some direction as to what to do when you get into the parking lot.
What's the idea once you get in there?
So, a guardrail is a good way to divide the areas. You can put some limited signage on there, I think on the drawing, we've identified a few things, and there may be some, you know, Peter may have some ideas about what he thinks makes sense, the board may have some ideas. But essentially, it's to identify, you know, how you park. I mean, let me put it to you this way, if you don't have the guardrails, w- once you have guardrails, it'll instantly solve the, do I angle park, do I head-on park? So that's the first.
We extensively talked about this early on, we extensively talked about this early on.
Yeah, 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 and I think the cost of the- I think the cost of the guardrail is no more expensive than the cost of the bumpers.
Okay.
Right.
I think it's prettier, too.
So we're done, we can continue this again?
Well, well, let's, E, why spec- why specifying a six-foot-high vinyl fence along the southern side of the parking area where four foot were fenced specified elsewhere?
That was something specifically, uh, insisted upon by United Foam.
Okay.
You know, United Foam wanted something-
I was just doing it, good enough.
They wanna put, yeah, they want people jumping over stealing their product.
Okay, what's the center of the turnaround of the dog park, which is timber guardrail protecting? What is in the center of the turnaround?
We're trying, yeah.